Would call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Tuesday, June 11th, 7:30 PM. Present are Ms. Lieper, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Asa, Dr. Jones, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Cannelli, and Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Vitale will be joining us a little later this evening. We'll be filling in for the time being, and Ms. Pittco will also be arriving later this evening. I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and have Dr. Jones lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would just like to ask the Board quickly if we could do two minor changes to the agenda with regard to order. I do see a number of people in the audience and expect some public comment. We do have the Ward High School Dance Team here for student recognitions, and we also have the Mill Hill Building Committee here for a quick recap and presentation. Could I ask for unanimous consent to move those two items before public comment? Any objections? Okay.
It's the presentation, not the vote.
Just the presentation.
Just the Mill Hill presentation is. So at this point, would like to bring forward the Fairfield Ward High School Dance Team State Champions. So we're very proud to have our very, very successful Ward Dance Team here this evening. This is actually the sixth year in a row that they've won the state championship, which is absolutely incredible. So just a couple of comments. We don't want the regularity of their success in any way to take away or diminish from how hard it is to do what they do. This team is an extremely hard-working team. They work together so well. We're so proud of them from Ward community, from the administration, the teachers, the whole athletic department is very proud of their success, not only in terms of winning, but you know, more importantly, in the way that they present themselves and the reputation they have gained for Fairfield Ward and for the town of Fairfield, in their competitions, the way that they compete and get along so well. They go beyond just our league, but throughout the entire state, and they have given Fairfield Ward the name, like "we are the standard in dance in the state of Connecticut," and it's just incredible what they've done. And additionally, they've done a great job in the past few years that they started to host an event at Ward, and it is just a first-class event. You know, I get feedback from many of the schools that it's as good, if not better, run than the state tournaments are. These girls do an incredible job. It's actually the only competition they can't win because they don't compete in it. They do an exhibition, which is always super impressive, but it's really, you know, it's great to have not only the girls, the coach and the girls doing, running the event, but really all the families that come together and put this event on. It's a huge undertaking, and we get schools from all over the place that love coming to our competition, and they get a first-class treatment at Ward. So we're just so proud of everything that the whole, you know, Ward Dance Community has done. We're proud to have Coach Jen Keely. Jen, how many years is this?
14.
14 years Jen has been our coach. So we'd like to have Jen introduce the girls, so we're going to turn it over to Jen. Thank you.
Okay, so first over here we have Tanika Walker. Victoria Hermsen, graduated senior. Rebecca Weinstein, Grace Sheriff. Not loud enough. Madison Ganisini. Emily Hathaway. Emily Emmerich. Can you guys give a little wave? Thanks. And Claire Demato. Jordan Parsons, who will also be graduating. Lily Baranowski. Haley Murnick. Sofia Tiago. Megan Heos. And Lila Foote. And we're missing one, Mia Squail.
One, two, three.
Next up is going to be Chairman Tom Quinn and the Mill Hill Building Committee for a quick update.
First of all, nobody said it had to be quick. I'm Tom Quinn.
Chuck Warrington with Colliers International.
Chuck is our, what we call our owner's rep, and sits with the committee and helps guide us through all the rules and regulations and work up the financials. My input to you tonight, because I know you have a vote later on, is what we've been through for the past, well, I guess, month in gaining approvals from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. And we finally got agreement, wherever, from the Board of Selectmen for $22,600 for Mill Hill renovation. That includes $21.5 million for the construction and soft cost, and another half a million for unknown remediation. We use this in Holland Hill, and it works, because every school built in the '70s has some kind of remediation problem. Don't know the amount, okay? Riverfield, we ended up spending over a million dollars because we had to rebuild a gym. We've been fortunate at Holland Hill. We're probably up around $300,000 now. But, you know, the stuff they used in those days, okay, today is considered carcinogenic, whether it's, you know, PCBs, okay, or asbestos. And our rule of our committee is that if you find anything where you think it's there, you get rid of it. So really, we're there to protect the kids, and we sincerely mean that. So we have had the Board of Finance approve the number of $22,000,6, including the $500,000. And I'm bringing that to you today, because I know that's on the basis of a 441 enrollment, and I know our educational specs are for a 504. And I would like very much, before we go to the state, to have everything compatible, because I'm concerned with the state government the way they are. They may take some repercussions against us if they're not. That's just our feeling. I've tried to get them to commit, and they have not as yet.
I think you said it all.
Said it all. I usually do, I guess.
Thank you, Chairman Quinn. Any members of the Board have any questions for the Building Committee?
Please.
Just to be clear, because the conversations were very lengthy, I assume built into this is there is, as with past Building Committees, the assumption that if the contingency is not used for remediation, that it is returned.
Absolutely.
It's not, you know, take it off of that list of other things you'd like.
Absolutely. The same as Holland Hill. If we don't use it for remediation, it goes back.
Okay.
We don't use it. It's not Quinn's stash fund.
Don't know why that's not built in as well, but, okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Dwyer.
Based on the, all of the development work that the team has done, I presume that all of the other ed specs that are in there are part of the plan that you're moving forward, and that you don't anticipate having to come back to us.
We meet, yeah. We meet all the rest of the ed specs to answer your question.
And I don't recall that they included in their, this is going to be a rhetorical question, Mr. Quinn, I don't recall that they included in their bond resolution specifically only allowing 21 classrooms.
They did not mention classrooms or enrollment.
Well, I presume that the-
There is total dollars.
I presume that the extra half million that you have couldn't get us an extra classroom.
The extra half million is for remediation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Quinn, and to the Building Committee for all your efforts, and we all know that you've been in some very long meetings with other town bodies, and-
No, really?
Thank you for hanging in there and going through, and we're happy to get you in and out of here a little earlier and quicker.
I appreciate that, but I will stay to the end for the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point of the meeting, we're going to go to public comment, and just a few notes for those of you who are not regulars here and may not know, public comment is limited to three minutes per person. You can speak on any agenda item. For those of you that want to speak now, go ahead. If you do not speak now and you want to speak on an agenda item, you'll have to wait for that item or till the end. So sometimes our meetings, in full disclosure, can go to 11 or later, hopefully not tonight, but we invite any member of the public up now to speak on any agenda item. Just when you come up, if you could, come on, come on up. If you could just state your name and address into the microphone and please speak into the microphone.
Tina Brown, 340 Merwin's Lane, Fairfield, Connecticut. So I'm a teacher, as well as a parent. The beginning of the school year, we were, we had our usual faculty meeting, and the teaching staff was informed that there would be no formative assessment, that everything would be summative. We were not asked about this, we were just told. We obviously knew it was coming, because we had many faculty meetings where we were given articles on the topic of removing formative, but there was never a vote. Do you think this is a good idea? Do you think it's a bad idea? So we had no input into it whatsoever in that sense. It was not our decision. We implemented it as we do when the administration tells us this is what's going to happen. When I read the policy, because I understand that the community came to the Board upset about the policy, and the Board's solution was to write this homework policy, when I read it, I honestly felt like a toddler, with my parents telling me how to pick up my toys, so that I didn't just shove them all in the corner. I'm a veteran teacher. I know what homework is. I know I have to tell the students they have homework. I know I have to provide that homework to them, whether it's a piece of paper I hand out, or whether or not it's something I post online. To know that the Board thinks so little of our abilities was astounding to me. I was so humbled by this, because you're telling us that we don't know this. We know this. I would say 100% of us know this. If you have verifiable proof, other than a teenager telling you so, of any teacher that doesn't know the purpose of homework, or doesn't provide the students with that homework, then by all means, talk to that teacher. But you're doing this to 100% of the teachers and treating us like children. And to know that that's how you feel about us is pretty shocking. The administration is the one who implemented it. Tell the administration to reverse it. We didn't ask for it, but we're the ones who are being punished. I mean, we know this, but it's amazing that you think this is what you had to do, when I believe, as the Board, you just tell the administration, "Change it," and they have to, I would think. So, thank you very much.
Hello. I'm John Whaley. I am an English teacher at Fairfield Ward High School. I want to start, actually, with a couple excerpts from a speech I've already given you guys about 18 months ago. Yang Zhao, he's a foundation distinguished professor in the School of Education at University of Candace writes, "To truly mold the 21st century world-class learner, we have to refocus how we evaluate students. Not everything that's worth counting is actually countable. Qualitative assessment is just as, if not more useful, as quantitative." Further, here we are, claiming to be fervent for fostering 21st century skills like innovation, entrepreneurship, critical thinking, risk-taking, and collaboration while still wallowing in the muck and mire of post-industrial revolution educational practices that Dewey, way back when, chided as requiring conformity with rules and standards, where he claimed way back when that students' attitudes must be one of docility, receptivity, and obedience. I wasn't even 100% sure on where you were going with this new mandate, so I just wanted to make sure that I spoke to both parts of it that I think that you were referencing. First of all, the homework issue. If we're trying to develop goal-oriented resilient learners, this runs directly counter to this if we were to start counting homework. Let's assume that a good grade would be a hollow goal for our scholars. We want to facilitate lifelong learners, according to our mission statement. Teachers should and do urge students of the importance of independent practice. That goes without saying. That's why I agree with Tina. Fully and urgently conveying that without time and dedication, one never grows in a particular skill. If we put a number or letter next to a kid for their behavior, for homework completion, essentially the kids are going to seek a gold star and not the learning. The homework counts Pavlovian paradigm will not make our students more goal-oriented or resilient unless, of course, the number or the letter is the point. Because of the time, I'm going to skip over to my issues with if we count formative assessments as GPA, in part of the GPA. By definition, formative assessments are not supposed to be detrimental to a student's academic outcome. Collegiate level, according to Gray in 2015, students at the secondary and collegiate level are afraid to fail. They do not take risks. They need to be certain about things. For many of them, failure is seen as catastrophic and unacceptable. External measures of success are more important than learning and autonomous development. If we truly want to encourage risk-taking, a necessary component of both innovation and resilience, we have to allow students to fail without punishment. Carol Dweck writes, "Unproductive effort is never a good thing. It's critical to reward not just effort, but learning and progress, and to emphasize the processes that yield these things." Students are still forming. They're still learning what learning even means. These kids will be held accountable now to a measurement of their attainment of their Last point, I promise. Just because an educational protocol's rolled out poorly, and this was, this does not mean it's a poor educational protocol. If we decide to revert back to the old way, we're, what are we telling our students and parents about our metal, our dedication to the truly educational opportunities we should be facilitating?
Sorry, I have to cut you off there. Thank you.
Courtney Bradley, 443 South Benson Road. I'm a parent. While I agree with some aspects of the proposed homework policy and commend your efforts to achieve consistency in homework across different teachers in the same class, however, I am a supporter of the current grading policy in which mastery of a subject is demonstrated through assessments such as quizzes, exams, papers, projects, and presentations, rather than completion of specific practice items. While homework is certainly helpful in obtaining mastery of a subject, it is not an actual assessment of whether someone has achieved a deep understanding and actually achieved that mastery. Therefore, I am not in favor of homework counting for a prescribed percentage of a grade. Additionally, the schools strongly suggest students be involved in extracurricular activities such as music, drama, sports, or other clubs. At the same time, they advocate for students to develop responsibility, learn to manage their time, and maintain optimal mental health status. These goals are not consistent with mandated completion of homework on a regular basis. Students should be responsible enough to recognize how the block of time they have to complete schoolwork is best allocated. If a student has a sports club or music commitment for several hours each evening, he or she has to prioritize what homework can be completed on a given day. It may be that one evening studying for chemistry class takes precedence over completing a math homework sheet. Students know which classes they struggle with, and they should be given the responsibility to manage their time accordingly. Furthermore, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends eight to 10 hours of sleep for teens up to 18 years old. For a high school student waking up at about 6:30 AM, that means getting to sleep at 10:30 just to reach the minimum recommended hours of sleep. Reduced sleep can affect performance and mental health. A quote from the AAP website, "Regular sleep deprivation often leads to some pretty difficult behaviors and health problems: irritability, difficulty concentrating, hypertension, obesity, headaches, and depression. Children who get enough sleep have a healthier immune system and better school performance, behavior, memory, and mental health." End quote. Mandating that homework count for a specific percentage of a grade will only force students, particularly high-achieving students who may be the most likely to be in demanding classes and school activities, to choose staying up to do homework versus getting sufficient sleep. That is not in the best interest of our children. I recommend that grades continue to be determined solely by summative assessments such as exams, projects, and papers, all of which are already worked on at home. And I just also wanted to have some clarification regarding the timing of this implementation. Given that students chose their courses for next year based upon the current homework policy, I am to guess that this policy is for implementation in the 2020-21 school year. Thank you for your time and dedication to the children of Fairfield.
Greg Hattis, Headmaster, Ludlow High School. So I've been in the district a blessed 17 years and had the privilege to be in Fairfield all that time, and 12 years as a principal, and I realize this is the first time I've ever spoken to public comment. And I bring that up only because I want to assure you that in my role as an administrator, it's my job to implement with fidelity the policies of the Board of Education, and I promise you I will always continue to do that. But I wanted to speak tonight from a personal side about the policy, the homework policy. There are some really great things in the homework policy. I do believe that teachers sharing the exact purpose of an assignment is really helpful for buy-in for students. Clear communication is always a great thing, and I'm very much in support of kids getting a break over some of their vacations. But I am personally concerned about the mandated minimum of 10% for grading formative, and I'm respectfully requesting that at the time at which you vote, that members send the policy back to the Policy Committee so that that portion can be reconsidered. My issue is the fact, as has been previously stated, with grading homework, yes, it is true that students who naturally or traditionally perform very well and do all of their homework, they will get a bump in their grade. One, two, three, maybe even four points with a high percentage of formative grading. However, the students who traditionally struggle and who tend to not do their homework, they stand to lose up to 15, 20, or 25 points in their grade. Where there is a small benefit for those who traditionally do well, there is a disproportionate negative impact on the students who traditionally struggle. A few months ago, Ms. Rebbling and I had the privilege of bringing forward to you a new policy, changing the names of the, of our courses, which then necessitated a GPA weighting discussion. And what we heard loud and clear from you as a Board was that we should not over-reward the students in the higher tiers, the AP and honors courses. This policy, the mandated formative, not only rewards students in those higher tiers, but it also punishes the students who are traditionally struggling. So we have heard the message very loud and clear from you, that you want there to be greater accountability for students to do homework. We understand that, and we look forward to working on that. But I would ask you to let us, as the administrative team, work with our teachers, to design something that matches our philosophic principles around emphasizing learning rather than focusing on the grade. We have pages and pages of feedback from teachers of all of the things that we try. We do this, we do surveys at the end of every year, talking about the various policies. There are some incredible suggestions in here, including maybe even a tiered approach, where starting as freshmen, have formative count of certain percentages, and then decrease that over the years, because as you know, in college, formative, there is no formative grade in college or homework grade, so as we may be better prepare our students. So things like that would not be possible in the current policy. Thank you very much.
My name is Jeremy Temporanza. I'm a teacher both at Roger Ludlow Middle School and at Fairfield Ludlow High School, a history teacher. When it comes to the proposed homework policy, I would just like to say a couple points. I know I'm a relatively new teacher and young, but I think that gives me good insight into some of the latest trends in teaching strategy and pedagogy, as well as, I also have a background in human development and family studies with a focus on adolescent development in high-risk populations. I'd like to start by making clear that I'm not against assigning homework or using it as part of classroom instruction. However, by making homework count towards students' grades, one risks adding undue pressure and stress towards something that should be practice. In part of the point, if part of the point of homework includes stimulating and deepening students' interests and developing initiative, responsibility, and self-direction, then the motivation for completing homework should be intrinsic. By making homework at least 10 to 15% of the grade, depending on the level, one makes homework not about teaching those above-mentioned skills, but instead gives students one more thing to be stressed about. This brings me to my final point, which relates to my degree in human development and high-risk populations, the role of stress, anxiety, and trauma on the adolescent brain. If we are to be true support systems to students, then I want to make sure that these points are included in any discussions about homework policy. When discussing anxiety and trauma-informed care, it's important to remember that these things cross the lines of socioeconomic status, race, gender, and more. By making the focus of homework the grade, students who are in high-risk groups now face the added stress of making sure their homework is not just complete, but correct, possibly without any family support. Not all students have the home support that a homework policy, as is currently written, takes into account. I'm only asking that these points be a part of the discussion before deciding on policy. Thank you for your time.
My name is Ben Francois. I actually live in North Haven by a teach here down here at Fairfield Ludlow. I'm a physics teacher, and I'm relatively new to the district, so I apologize if I don't know too terribly, too terribly much. But what I do know is I saw the rollout. I've been down here at Ludlow for two years, and it's been interesting to watch everything. I came down here and I greatly enjoyed the amount of encouragement that I received as a teacher down here at Ludlow. My previous place did have a mandatory 20% homework as grade policy, and I can tell you where I saw that that went. When I worked up at Amity Regional High School, what I saw was exactly as my colleague just described, students stressed out beyond belief about getting the homework done. It became more about accomplishing the homework and less about, as you laid out very nicely in the beginning of the homework policy, what the true purpose of homework was. It became more about, can I get the homework done, rather than what is this homework trying to give me? That being said, I do have a couple other points that the policy outlined that kind of goes against some of the things I know of that are common practices in Ludlow. For example, one of the things that they said was, "Students should understand not only what to do, but also how to do it." I think this is a little bit worded poorly, because you have teachers that teach flipped classrooms, which means that they get their instructional aspect during home, so they may not necessarily know what they're doing going into a practice there. Myself, I like to give challenge problems that maybe it's not immediately laid out. Myself, I like to give challenge problems that maybe it's not immediately laid out, everything that they should know exactly how to do. I want to push them farther, make them learn more, get that critical thinking under their belt. And I think that aspect kind of goes against it a little bit. Another aspect of it is that teachers should post homework online no later than 90 minutes after dismissal. This can be very inhibitive for teachers of myself that likes to have a fluid classroom. If I find that my class is not understanding a key concept that I knew that they already had, which does happen from time to time, no matter how good of a teacher you are, you need to be able to, you know, work with that class. So I may not have the homework that I assign them up online immediately. I could have assigned problems in the book. I could be working with students after class, after school. I could be a coach and working with them after that. That 90 minutes is a very hard line. I apparently have run out of time.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to pull up my notes. Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. I am respectfully asking the Board remove voting on future locations of the Early Childhood Center from tonight's agenda until more information is provided to the Board and the public. This Board has proven itself to be measured and invested in having pertinent information it needs to make decisions with the pertinent information it needs to make...that provide the best educational opportunities, not only in the short term, but as a part of a vision for the future. I fear this decision tonight will change that. There are so many effects that this one choice about ECC placement will have. How will integrating pre-K programs into our K-5 elementary schools affect us in long-term growth plans? Is there a plan for growth once we have removed 10 to 12 general education classrooms out of circulation district-wide? What about the Ward facility, that has been financially invested in as a pre-K facility? Is there room at Holland Hill and North Stratfield for growth of the ECC program? Or would more elementary schools be added as the ECC population inevitably continues to grow, further breaking up their collaborative program? The ECC is a wonderful program and an asset to our district and our community. As a current ECC parent, I have applauded this Board's intent to do what is best for their current and future students. The ECC has overwhelmingly voiced their need to stay in one location. This timeline, not plan, puts them at two, possibly three, locations in less than two years. All that said, as a North Stratfield parent, as well as an ECC parent, I have to wonder if this solution is the best option for any community involved. There are many unanswered questions. How many students will be relocated to the two schools over the next two years, five years, 10 years? How many general education classrooms will be displaced, now and in the future? What security policies will change to accommodate different entrances that possibly include walking past our exterior classrooms and play areas during recess, during pickups and dismissals, and during itinerant services that occur during and throughout the school day? Where will the staff and parent parking take place? As ECC specialized programming typically holds more staff than an elementary program, which 504 buildings are designed for. Has this difference been looked into or even examined? Which playground play space will the ECC occupy? Where will the ECC have their support staff, OT/PT speech? Where will the ECC have office parent pickup space? Will K-5 general education core spaces, APR, gym, music, art, library, tech, be moved or have to be eliminated to accommodate the ECC needs at either building? I hope the Board will take the time to answer these questions before a vote and not after. I hope this Board will continue being a transparent and measured body. Can I finish the last sentence?
Time's out.
Can I finish the last sentence?
Quick.
And will stop a vote until a plan, not simply a timeline, can be collected and shared with the ECC, North Stratfield, and Holland Hill communities. Only then can the best decision be made for our district as a whole.
Kelly Imschweiler, 391 Nonna Pog Road. I would also like to urge the Board to delay the vote on securing new locations for the ECC program. As Fairfield parents, it is our responsibility to ensure that all the needs of our children are heard when making a big change such as this. To that end, I again urge you to delay the decision to move forward with this until a proper decision can be made. Off the top of my head, as I sat down to think about what to say today, these following questions, which I do not see adequate answers to, popped into mind. If a separate entrance is to be established, where will this go? How will it be staffed? How will we manage multiple pickup and drop-offs? If the children are to enter through the main entrance, how does this work? How does this not disrupt the flow of the children as they go about their day? If pickup and drop-offs are to happen while our children are out on the playground, how do you vet that these individuals coming to pick up children are, in fact, actually allowed on the grounds? And they're not somebody who just assigned her to wander off and see what was going on at North Stratfield or Holland Hill? How will traffic be managed at pickup and drop-off, which is already a challenging day at best? Is the ECC going to provide their own support staff? For example, are you going to have your own school nurse, and where is that person going to be housed? I would expect that children at this age are going to need their own dedicated playground. How is that going to be managed? And is that playground going to be closed during pickup and drop-off for the elementary schools so as not to create further congestion in the parking lots? In terms of the space beyond the classroom and playgrounds, will ECC look to use staff lounge, gym, and cafeteria? And how does that get accounted for during the day for the regular schoolchildren? I again urge you to delay this vote, and we are by no means saying that we do not welcome the ECC children at either or any location at a Fairfield Elementary School. We simply wish that the needs of all the children that are at these schools, and the staff, and the future children, are recognized. Thank you.
Kelly McWinnie, 947 Churchill Road. Thank you to the Board, as always, for volunteering to serve our community. In regard to the agenda item tonight that the Board of Education approved the ECC site timeline, I respectfully say, you don't have a plan. How can you make a decision when you have no details about how moving the ECC to Holland Hill and NSS will be implemented? The families and staff of the ECC, Holland Hill, and NSS have not seen this plan or been allowed to weigh in. I'm a parent at both NSS, and I am an alumni parent at the ECC, and I value both programs immeasurably. The ECC deserves to have a solution that is not a Band-Aid, but a long-term plan to meet the needs of its growing population, an emphasis on growing. If you bring the ECC to these elementary schools, and I have to say, I've gotten very different information from different people who have emailed me back on this issue, you will not be taking two or three classrooms. You'll be taking a minimum of five, possibly six, and in the future, more. The need for services at the ECC grows, and realistically, they need their own space. They need to be able to work together, they need to be able to collaborate, and they need to be able to continue to provide the kind of education for our most vulnerable students that they always have. And in my personal opinion, I believe they're saving the town and the school system money in the long run with their absolutely fabulous early intervention. Questions that have already been brought up, safety is huge. If you're going to have a separate entrance for the ECC at a school like North Stratfield, it will have to be at the back of the building, where you will have people circulating around our grounds all day. How will the office staff, who keeps an eye on the safety of our school, know who's walking behind the second grade and the first grade wing and through their playground? Has the police force, have they weighed in on this? Have you spoken to them? Again, the ECC needs access to spaces like the gym. How will that affect the scheduling for elementary schools? I have to say that going forward with this decision is irresponsible without answers to these and many other questions. It's disrespectful to the families of the schools and to the staff members. We deserve consideration, granted other Fairfield schools, when a change of this magnitude is put in front of us. And I would respectfully ask you to put this off until you can put a plan in front of all of us, and we can weigh in and ask questions. Thank you.
My name is Amy McIntosh. I'm a social studies teacher at Fairfield Ward High School. I'm here to speak about the proposed homework policy. I have two major areas of concern regarding this policy. First is the use of the term homework. As written in the policy currently, it really does not encapsulate all of the types of assignments and work that students are doing at home. For instance, in my AP Government class, students might be asked to listen to a podcast, and then we discuss it in class the next day. Obviously, you know, the policy here wouldn't change that type of assignment, but, you know, that idea of counting homework, how would I count that? But more specifically, I'd like to talk about the idea of having homework or formative assessment be 10% of the grade at the high school level. I would like to speak of my personal experience this year of changing to 100% summative. I'll be the first to tell you, when I came back to school in the fall and I had 100% summative, I was not pleased. I was upset. I was like, how are my students going to do this? I don't understand what's going to happen. Don't you know my U.S. History kids love their formative work? Over the course of the year, I worked with my administrator, Kurt Simonson, and really got to focus on what learning meant for my students. I realized I wasn't giving students effective feedback using formative assessments as a grade. I'd write a seven out of 10 on an assignment and be like, oh, there you go. What this process of moving to 100% summative did for me, but more importantly, my students, was increased the amount of feedback I was giving them that made a meaningful impact on their learning. I know there've heard lots of concerns in the community that grades are dropping. I haven't done the scientific analysis on my grades this year versus last year, but my cursory look of them is my students are doing better this year, not just in the grade book, but because we are learning more together. My students are more successful this year, and the move to 100% summative makes all of that more tangible for my students. I would be really disappointed to go back to a world where I would be counting formative assessments as 10% of the grade. Thank you.
My name is Lauren Marchello. I've been a social studies teacher in the district for seven years. I won't be up here too long, because the idea of speaking in front of the Board makes me want to pass out, so if I do, just take me out and move me to the side. I am speaking because I feel so passionately about this policy that I see potentially being changed back to the way we used to do things. While I loved the switch to 100% summative and found the results incredible in terms of student engagement in class, because it mattered so much more what was happening in class, because what was happening outside of class no longer mattered, and I was reducing homework altogether, knowing that teenagers are going to be less likely to complete it without an incentive, I wanted to kind of speak on their behalf today, because I asked them to share what they felt about the homework policy. And I got a lot of answers that I think wouldn't surprise any teacher in the room. I miss the grade boost. Without a reward, it felt less important. I would only complete homework if I knew the teacher might collect it and count it as a summative. And I think most importantly, I asked students to be blunt with me and share how many of them have copied another student's homework before. And 14 out of 18 admitted willingly that they've done that. And so counting homework, that we have no real way of checking, is their own work and authentic work, I think is not good practice. They also spoke to being happy that they no longer had to complete worksheets that were meaningless to them, and that their teachers felt that they had to assign them simply to fill that portion of the grade book. I think the issue is not that we no longer count homework, it's that we haven't taught students the value of homework. And that's something that I think many of my colleagues spoke to tonight, that we've been doing, you know, every day since this policy changed at the beginning of the year, to show students the value of learning, the value of process, and trying to get away from the very real notion that homework was basically serving the purpose to inflate their grades. The wonderful thing about kids is that they're brutally honest, and they were giving me this feedback today, kind of hoping that I would share it with you. So thank you for listening.
Erin Lopez, 77 Patricia Circle in Fairfield. I'm here regarding the ECC agenda item. I'm not going to repeat what other people have already said, but I feel like this ECC item is speaking to a larger problem that we have right now in the town, which is use of space. And I know you know all of these issues, but I really feel like maybe we need to take a step back at the moment to see where our space is, what we have, what we're planning on, and where we're going in the future, because there's so much development going on in town that is just not accounted for. And a lot of the information that we have at the moment, in terms of projections, there's a lot of high-density, you know, development being planned, and there's a lot of tear-downs, even in the North Stratfield District, that weren't happening a few years ago, where, you know, older families are moving out and young families are moving into a new four-bedroom house. So I urge you to take a step back and really take a more comprehensive look at our space issues at the moment, and hopefully, I know that you have thought a lot about this, but I hope that we can take some more time, given especially the Mill Hill vote recently, to really look at what our space needs are and what is going to serve our community best.
Mary Lupo, 95 Highland Road. I'm a Holland Hill parent, and like many other parents that have spoken about the ECC decision. I'm asking you two guys wait on making a decision, because I feel like the true ramifications of moving ECC to North Stratfield and Holland Hill have really not been thoroughly vetted. We don't know the answers to these, and I'm not sure if you guys know the answers to the impact that moving five or six preschool classrooms into elementary schools. And I know people say more like two or three, but when you have 20 sections of ECC students at two locations, to me, that's five classrooms per location, if you do the math. So that's a lot of classrooms to put in one elementary school, where we do have space constraints pending. Holland Hill is going to have four kindergarten sections next year, at least that's the trend that it's looking for. And if that continues, then we will run out of space again, even though we have this new beautiful renovation that we are so grateful for. So I'm just asking, again, to really step back and think about all the ramifications of this decision before a vote is taken. Thank you.
I'm Randy Cohen. I'm an NSS parent, and I just found out yesterday that this issue was even being considered. And I just wanted to add my voice to the many to say, hey, can we take a step back here and really think this through and talk to the community about their concerns before we make this really important and potentially transformative decision? You know, just a couple of things that occurred to me off the top of my head, even though I'm not a policymaker, is it is very clear at NSS that the parking lot is already vastly overcrowded during pickup and dismissal. Parents are parking in unmarked spaces, they're making their own spaces, you know, they're parking a block from the school and, you know, walking to get their kid. You know, I don't know where other cars could potentially fit. There's also very little air conditioning in the school, maybe four or five classrooms total. And if we're proposing bringing children in who are pre-K, you know, into these classrooms that are now getting increasingly hot, you know, my concern is that that would not be good for their health. It's already a bit of a concern in my mind to the kindergarteners. So, you know, those are just two points that occurred to me off the top of my head. I know there's many more that have already been brought up. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your thoughtful consideration.
I'm Jen Cruz, 64 Apone Street, parent of a Holland Hiller. So I ask you to postpone voting on the ECC until you have and share a plan with all of us, and all of our questions can be answered. I'm concerned about how the security of Holland Hill will be impacted, along with classroom space, and how Holland Hill would be impacted with the ECC and the new affordable housing happening at the same time, including the current traffic situation being a problem right now. Thank you.
Jerianne Mitchell, ECC. Welcome back. I know a lot of these points have already been made tonight, and I would like you, again, to reject the motion to proceed with the timeline proposed. Just the conversations that we had at the May 21 Board of Ed meeting, Ms. Pitko's point about the investment, the $2 million already invested in the ECC Ward, Mr. Peterson's concerns for safety, Dr. Jones stressing, you know, the 50-50 ratio and where we're going with how many open seats. going with how many open seats, like looking long-term. If we grew by 40 seats this year and the projections are 56 for next year, are we budgeting into these plans that room for growth and potential? You know, Mrs. Jacobson made the point about the classrooms taking out from the elementaries. Again, we had comments from the board about two sites versus one site. We do understand, we will always sit here and say that one site is best from our personal perspective and the history. The conversation about the earlier start time and end time at Holland Hill, and if you are, as Dr. Jones suggested, putting all the ECCs at the same time, you then have students and staff in the building when no one else is there. What kind of safety issues does that put? You know, and then Mrs. Leeper was asking about the equity. Is it perceived or is it, you know, real? So, again, there's always going to be perceived differences irregardless of where ECC will be, so why not keep us at Ward and Stratfield? You know, our concerns are, it seems to be rushed. We understand the need for the definite split and increasing the size of the Stratfield program next year, but the move the following year to Ward and North Stratfield and leaving some at Stratfield. I guess our question is, there's a whole lot of changes in quick succession. There's already potential changes from kids from Stratfield coming to ECC next year, Ward, and kids from Ward going to Stratfield next year, so that's two changes. You know, like, I know that there was a thoughtful process put in place about keeping Stratfield and allowing those children to kind of graduate and then slowly fading that program out, but are we looking at the kids that are already being flipped, the Stratfield kids that are being flipped to ECC Ward, and the Ward kids that are being flipped to ECC Stratfield next year? I guess the whole thing is, you know, again, the conversation about redistricting and what's going on and what that impact is for the buildings and the sites. I guess the other concern that's causing possible strife is the current look at the typical peers being offered double sessions, morning and afternoon, in order to increase peer ratios, something that's not offered to the ECC kids. You know, again, our biggest concern is that we're acting in haste and the possible future repercussions. You know, we have a need for developmentally appropriate practice and a supportive family environment. This is truly instrumental in making a kid's transition to the school district a successful one. You know, we definitely feel strongly that one centralized site is the best solution, but we're looking at the fact that we need to be in two sites next year, so can we go back to the five-to-10 year? Can we go back to just, let's look at something, let's do it for a period of time, and use that rich information to plan thoughtfully for the future? I mean, you guys do a tremendous job, and you have a lot of pressure, and you're under this and making these decisions that we don't have a lot of say in and truly don't want to say in, but what we do want to say, and what we do want to say, that we have the utmost confidence that you'll act in the best interests of all students, especially our most vulnerable one, and we definitely thank you for considering our input. You made it to the time. Nice.
My name is Jane Vigliotti, and I feel like I live at Fairfield Woods, but I'm not a Fairfield resident. I'm a teacher at Fairfield Woods. I'm going to combine a couple of comments that I got from the staff at Fairfield Woods along with mine in regards to the homework policy. Kim Rapp, a science teacher at Fairfield Woods, said, "As for homework, I provide homework handouts or the online textbook pages to each student during class. Does this mean that I now have to scan and post them as well? This does not promote independence and responsibility on the part of the student. And what if I am in after-school meetings, which are occurring more and more due to an increased number of obligations, and forget to post something? Posting of all required materials, in her opinion, should not be included in the policy. It's counterintuitive to the development of the student in mind, body, and character as an active part of the FPS curriculum framework." I had a comment on, "Students should understand not only what to do, but also how to do it." So, there's always going to be a student that says, "Well, I didn't get it. I didn't get it." So, you know, how do we, you know, do we not count their homework? My sixth graders can tell you what homework is for. It's for practice, and they know what happens on game day if you don't practice or on recital day. So, we talk about homework is for practice, and you don't win and lose, you always win when you practice. So, to count it, you know, negatively or to make them nervous about practicing, I hesitate to put that in there. "The idea of the student's age, need, and need for playtime and out-of-school responsibilities must be considered." I mean, I know we consider religious holidays, but I don't know, I have sometimes over 100 students, I don't know all of their out-of-school responsibilities. That language, to me, is a little problematic. Item number seven, "When a student's grade is being adversely affected by poor homework performance, the teacher shall communicate orally or in writing." This is what we pay IC for. The minute we put in that a student didn't do their homework, parents are getting alerts all the time. So, is this an extra communication on top of that? So that, I mean, the homework average is right there. Item number nine, "No homework due or test given the first two school days back from Thanksgiving. What happens then in the block schedule? Now, the break has been extended to four days without practice, and they need practice because I know they haven't been practicing over Thanksgiving. So, I like to give homework. Boom, we come back that Monday, and here's, oh, let's remember what we were doing." Kim Rapp also said here...
I'm sorry, that was time.
Oh, that was my three minutes. Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything in writing that you want to submit to the board? Invite you to do that.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Whitney Walker. I'm a biology teacher at Fairfield Ludlow. I only have a sticky note, because I was thinking some things as people were talking. But we are on, the teachers are on the same team as the parents. We want our students to learn outside the classroom, too. But for this policy, this is to Greg Hatz's point, this policy, it doesn't seem like this is for the struggling student at all. And I don't know, and that's to your point, Tina, I don't know what problem this is intending to solve or where this actually came from, but the only, the only kids, grade-wise, this will benefit are the kids that are going to do homework anyway. So, it looks to me that it's just for a grade bump, because I don't, I don't see how this is going to benefit students. I just don't see it. Like, if there's a problem with homework, we can all work together to find a way, but this particular policy, I just can't see it helping our students.
Good evening. My name is Signe Wenberg-Mered. I'm a Learning Center teacher at Fairfield Ludlow High School. I've been in the district for 25 years through a whole plethora of different policies, and I'm a parent in the district. I think that regardless of what policy is ultimately decided on, and hopefully, it is decided on with the input of the stakeholders, we need to focus on connecting process to product for students. We need to teach students how to complete work outside of the classroom, and we need to work collaboratively with parents to encourage partnership in the educational process and hold all of the stakeholders, parents, students, and teachers, responsible for student learning.
Would any other members of the public like to come forward?
Frank Sohagian, 20 Chelsea Street, and a teacher at Fairfield Woods Middle School as well. I don't, when I saw this on the agenda for this evening's meeting, I was really kind of shocked. And when I think about the priorities that you folks have to deal with, and you're staying here after 11 o'clock, and I saw the homework policy on the agenda, I almost fell out of my chair. I mean, I just couldn't, I was in disbelief, that this is something that needs to be addressed. I totally share Tina Brown's assessment on this feeling like we are going back, being treated like toddlers. I would just leave you with a question. We often hear that teachers are supported. We support our teachers. I ask you to put yourself, as a teacher, reading that policy, and do you read that as something to guide you, or do you read that as something to control you? I just ask you that question and think about that, and ask you, finally, to scrap it all together. Put it away. You have much more important things to deal with in this board than to deal with this homework policy. It's crazy. Thank you.
Bob Smoller, I'm president of the Fairfield Education Association and a math teacher at Ward. I, too, was a little taken aback by the policy. We all support practice. I don't think there's any question about this, but I think what took me aback by it was a little bit different than everybody else. This board has been extremely good about letting the professionals in the administration or at the teaching side sort of determine what's in the best circumstances of running the district. How should the district be run? Should, you know, the hiring practices, other aspects of the administration of the district. And I felt like this policy that we're thinking about putting in place is extraordinarily prescriptive, talking about, you know, what the grade book should look like, 10%, 15%, how homework should be used. I mean, we have a range of classes. Sometimes homework isn't appropriate, sometimes homework is appropriate, sometimes there are things going on that would not allow you to post a homework assignment online within 90 minutes. And I would hope that any good teacher would say, "If I assign a homework assignment and I don't get something posted on time, then maybe I won't count it, or maybe we'll adjust in some way, shape, or form." I'm sure there's been incidences, you know, over the course of time where that's been an issue, but by and large, teachers understand. You can't ask somebody to do homework if you don't provide them with the assignment so they can do the work. So, I think, you know, overall, we all agree that practice is fantastic, homework is a good idea, it has its place. Sometimes we count it, sometimes we don't. I doubt very much, there are very many teachers that are grading homework assignments on a daily basis and providing consistent feedback like that. Sometimes you just count completion. So, I would say, let's try to keep our hands off the professionals and how they are operating in their classroom. Let us, let us do our jobs. We know what our classes are like, we know what they need. We know, you know, when to count a formative assessment, when not to count a formative assessment. We knows what the needs of our students are. If you want to make a general statement about the value of homework and that you would encourage practice, fine, make that general statement. But as far as the prescription of, you know, when to post or when not to post, you know, how much it should count, how much it shouldn't count, making sure that you're aware of students, you know, outside responsibilities, I mean, these are things that we just do in the normal course of things, and I would hope that you would trust us enough as professionals to give us the ability to make those adjustments as needed. So, that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. I apologize for being late. I will watch Fair TV to see what I missed. Mr. Asa, thank you for filling in. Can you just...
School climate.
School climate. Okay. We're going to start the school climate survey. Dr. Jones?
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible] [inaudible] So, that we can respond. I want, I'm going to do my next time. I don't want this, first of all...
Which one's it gone? Is she I?
These guys should please, they have to ask this question. You know what I mean? But if they're not even going to ask about it, I don't want to get into a tit-for-tat with an audience member who can't engage in the conversation. I am happy for the conversation. [inaudible] 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 That's what I'd like to say to Frank Say. I have to, in and out, and that's where I have to be careful tonight. Is it covered? Oh, no, no, at some point, I'll move to, so I actually shouldn't be talking right now, I should be organizing, organizing this. Can I have a piece of notebook paper?
Do you want this sent up there and click through?
Like, they need to be upstate here.
[inaudible] So, and the whole cotton thing, guess what? I catch it, you know, because I'm with their staff, so I don't want them to attack you as a teacher. [inaudible] Well, see, that's the only thing I want to say, is that this is not groundbreaking, you know? First of all, do you know any, do you know any?
No.
So, to, I mean, my point being, it's hard for somebody else to close it unless I can use this one. Which means it's not more than 10%. Because that's where I was, I was excited somebody else had it.
[inaudible] 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 Did I miss the whole thing, or?
I hope they think when my face was looking at the back, I hope they were talking about ECC. And also, great, so I have nobody to talk to. So, I'll look back.
[inaudible]
Yeah, exactly, so. I don't know why it's not working though. Is this plugged in there right here?
Yeah.
It's on the thing. I mean, this?
Yeah, that should be working.
Okay.
Why don't you watch it and see if it clicks through this one? It's going through?
Yeah. Oh, it just went down. I saw it. For just like a split second.
Wait, you know what?
Which one is not working?
It's in and out. You just had it.
How about end slideshow? If you saw it, because doesn't it have something to do with that? And then let's go to...
Okay, moving up there. Okay, moving up there.
Dr. Jones?
Be two minutes. He's going to move it up here.
Okay. Can I just ask the board to come back to the table for one second while we're fixing these technical difficulties? Where's Jeff? Do. Dr. Jones, just give us one second. Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, can I ask you to join us at the table for one second before Dr. Jones starts her presentation?
My apologies.
So I caught up a little bit. I understand that you had the presentation on Mill Hill while in my absence. Since the building committee is still here and they've had a number of very late meetings over the last couple of weeks, I was wondering if I could just have a sense of the body to move up the vote in the agenda. Ms. Pico, I'm not sure when she's going to be here, so we could vote on the approval to change the capacity in Mill Hill EdSpecs and move that forward. So we can just vote now and this way, if there's any last minute questions for the building committee, we can ask them. Otherwise, they can take their leave if they so desire. So can I have a motion to approve the capacity in Mill Hill EdSpecs? Recommend a motion that the Board of Education change the capacity outlined in the Mill Hill Educational Specifications from 504 to 441 to align with funding approved by the Board of Selectment and Board of Finance. Mr. Peterson, can I have a second? Mrs. Gerber, any discussion? Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
I do have one question, but I'd like to start by just making a statement. I'd actually thought of going up during public comment to say this, but then I saw the line and I thought better of it. People had other things to say and I do have this moment to do it. But as an elected official to this board, there's a lot that happened at the Tuesday, June 4th Board of Finance meeting that I was obviously unhappy with, first and foremost with the final decision. But that's not what I'm here to debate because that decision is done and passed. But I would just like to say, for anyone in the public listening, to represent myself, that I just want to say, thank you, chairperson, chairman, Mrs. Vitale. Thank you, Dr. Jones, for your work at that extremely long Board of Selectment meeting, that extremely longer Board of Finance meeting, that at the end of the day, I thought you represented us and our views and the data and the vision and the leadership that we ask you to represent. I think you did it beautifully. And one comment in particular that I take strident objection to was the accusation that the two of you were ripping apart one of our elementary school communities, pitting one aspect of it against another, was a reprehensible accusation. And I just want to make very clear, and thank you, I hope the public would support this sentiment, that as we have very difficult work to do, the decisions we come out of that with is a decision of us as a body of nine. We all own it. For two of you to have to stand up there and be accused of something was something that was almost more upsetting to me than anything else that happened in that meeting. I can deal with the decision because I genuinely know, we don't, we can't see 10, 15, 20 years into the future. One group is right. One group is not as right. And we honestly don't know. We have, we've done a lot of work with these numbers and we come from a certain position, but that didn't need to be said. And I just want to know that I stand with you. I wish I could have been standing with you, well, sort of wish I could have been standing with you at that moment. And I just want to say a very sincere thank you to both of you for standing there and doing that work and attempting that advocacy. That said, I did have a question.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that that is our job, our responsibility to represent the board. I apologize that we couldn't make a decision go another way, but I appreciate the board's support. I appreciate those members that were there at both meetings that have advocated in front of other town bodies, that gave public comment, that lended, you know, edged the research. Mr. Peterson for standing and representing the board with us at the table. It, you know, as tough as it was at times, I know that you had my back and we were, we were in this together. So with that, your question, Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Just because I think it's worth asking. Because we believed so fervently in the size and the wanting the flexibility of those additional classrooms, I'm going to follow up on Mr. Dwyer's point to Mr. Quinn earlier. And that's something that I did put out already to the two of you and just to have it said publicly. I assume that there is nothing that could be altered in other aspects of the EdSpecs to create even one more classroom, even two more, staying within the 22 million. And I should say, I do thank the Board of Finance for approving the project. It's a long overdue renovation, which I know the Mill Hill community is going to be very happy with. But that said, is there anything that can be moved to carve out even one more classroom from the other aspects of the EdSpecs? And I don't know if that's a question to you, to Dr. Jones, to Mr. Quinn?
Well, I will, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a little bit of a loaded question because it's, that is a decision of the board of what you, you would want to remove from an EdSpec. I will let the chairman of the building committee come forward if he has anything to, do you have anything to add, Mr. Quinn? To just, he can speak to the numbers in terms of, you know, what could or could not, or whether you wouldn't, whether would be advisable. Dr. Jones, you know, the question was asked to you first. Do you have anything that you'd like to comment on that?
I think the greatest challenge we face right now is the June 30th deadline. That impacts being able to reexamine a project.
And I think I would also just, just having been at past building committees, that, you know, there's still a lot of unknowns. You know, once the construction starts, and we've seen it with past building projects, that there are, you know, once you start tearing apart walls, surprises that come with costs. And we've seen building committees have to value engineer things out of the EdSpec in order to stay in budget. So I would be cautious about taking that, start value engineering at this stage in the game. But I will defer to the chair.
First of all, this is schematic design, okay? That's our beginning design elements. But we have a long way to go. We go further, further designs. And also, when we go out there to get bids, okay, we don't know where the bids are going to fall. These are all estimates. We've been fortunate in Holland Hill. Our bid process yielded like $300,000 favorable, but it could very well have been $800,000 negative. So to answer your question, if you want to change the EdSpec, take things out, yeah, you can find money. But that's what it's called. You got to take it out. It's not really value engineering. It's you guys telling me that's not what you want. Right? I will build what you want. If you want 10,000 bids, I'll build it. Okay? I don't care.
Oh, you would.
If you give me the money, then they'll come. Okay? Not to make a joke of it, but seriously, at this stage, I couldn't do that.
Okay. And I, and I do hear Dr. Jones's point about that June 30th deadline is something that's been very much motivating. So, and I apologize, I don't remember the term for this. What is the, the name for the, what is it? The add-on, the?
Alternate deduct.
The alternate deduct?
Duct alternate or?
So the, yes, we can, we can take care of these items if there's room in the budget sort of thing, correct? That's the, the name for that list is what I'm looking for.
It's either an add alternate or a deduct alternate.
Oh, the add alternates?
Is it possible that if these bids came in so favorable that we could add a classroom? Is that something that as part of the EdSpecs, we can have just as a standalone item on the add alternate list? Like, that would be part of a motion to amend this, to add that to that list? Again, so not taking anything away from the EdSpecs so that one elementary school is comparable to another. But again, should the bids prove favorable?
You're saying, can I have an add alternate that says gets me back to 504?
No, no, no. At that point, it would only be a, what, 462?
Okay.
So no, I, even I'm not that optimistic.
Mr. Dwyer?
My experience in construction is that you get far better pricing when you do it as a deduct alternate than an add alternate. It says, please add this and you'll find that very nice premium that we have for those three extra schools, you'll find that it actually, three extra classrooms, you'll find that it actually costs more than that when you ask a contractor to add them. I had intended my question to be a rhetorical question because the money is the money. But I think Mrs. Max and Cannelly brings up a good point. On short notice, if we asked our staff to rethink the EdSpecs and would they trade something in the EdSpecs in order to get the three classrooms, I think tonight is not the time to ask them that question. They deserve to have more study on that. And Mr. Quinn brings up a good point. There are a lot of unknown unknowns still out there and that information has to go forward. So I would suggest that the only way that we could move forward is to put the building committee on notice that as they further develop the plans, that if they find a way to come back and suggest a change to the EdSpecs that would allow for one or two or even all three classrooms, that they bring that information forward to us.
You don't realize I report to the Board of Selectment.
But you also.
I report to Board of Selectment.
But you also keep, all building committees do keep the Board of Education up to date.
I will, and I will keep you up to date.
I appreciate it. So I, so I don't think we could make that decision tonight, but I do think we, I think it's a good point to say, if there are possible solutions, we ought to explore them as the project gets further along.
So I'm not seeing that, again, I, it's however it's done, informally or formally, the notion that favorable, working within the budget, I have no interest in going over the budget. Working within the budget, if it became possible, I would like us to be kept apprised of that.
Well, I think that we have Mrs. Gerber as our liaison that can report back to us in terms of if all of a sudden there, there's millions of dollars.
Not millions.
Well, you know, well, one million, one million.
Well, 1.3 got us three classrooms.
To Mr. Dwyer's point that adding one may not necessarily be one-third of, all right.
Look, it's a concept. I'm not looking to get into the minutia of it. It's a concept.
If, if it seems that there are cost savings that they should come back, share that information with the board so we can take the proper action with the Board of Selectment. Mr. Asa?
I would say at this point, I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, but at this point, if we're going to move this project forward, I think we need to vote on this motion as is. And once we do that, we have to understand that we are going to be submitting paperwork to the state. And there may be some other unanticipated hurdles, and I'm not saying I object to what you're saying, but there could be unanticipated hurdles at the state level with reimbursements if we start going back to them and saying, wait a minute, we have a little extra money. We got 750 here. We want to add a classroom. So I would say if we're going to move forward on this tonight, as much as many of us are not happy about it, we need to go ahead and vote for the 441. And, and I, I mean, based on what Mr. Quinn has said, I think the only way that we're realistically going to get that is to take something out, to your point. And so I would say, if you're interested in that, I would bring that up now before we make this vote.
And it was more of a rhetorical exercise. It was a, it's a question I have been asked. I wanted to put it out there publicly. I completely agree that doing the actual digging in work of shaving here and there would absolutely push us past June 30th, and I have no interest in that. So yes, I'll be, I want to move the project forward. It will be as a 441. I simply wanted to put the board on notice that I at least would be very interested in if I start, when Mrs. Gerber gives us our reports, if we start hearing favorable reports on favorable bids, that that is something I'm putting everyone on notice, is something I would be keenly interested in knowing that is possible. Again, rose colored glasses on, I get that. But, and again, let me repeat, I certainly have no interest in going over budget.
Oh, we won't.
What?
We won't.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Dwyer?
Comments? In 2010, a different board voted to make this a 24 classroom, building 504 students. And three other boards have looked at that question and come to the same conclusion. The Board of Finance, as well as the Board of Selectmen, the majority on those two bodies, presented so much misinformation and unfactual information to justify their decision that it was disturbing to me. I agree with Mrs. Max and Cannelly that the disrespect that they showed to our staff, to the building committee, and to our chairperson was just too obvious. In fact, we got an email that pointed that out. And, and so I apologize on behalf of this community that our superintendent had to sit through that and that you had to sit through that. I have no doubt that the majority of this board will vote to move this project forward, and it does need to be moved forward. I don't think I can vote for this motion though, because then it would suggest that the unanimous board said it was really a want, not a real need for 24 classrooms. And there ought to be a voice that says they made a mistake. It wasn't like there's one judgment and another judge. They made a mistake. They took political considerations rather than factual. A year ago, it was, well, the ledge probably will make it more expensive. And the building committee said, that's not the case. Then they moved on to transportation and traffic and said, well, that's a problem. And the traffic person said, only in one intersection would it create a 2.6 second delay. It's not traffic. So then they went on to enrollment projections. And we clearly showed that yes, at Mill Hill, if you're only looking at the neighborhood that they're focused on, we could make it due for the next 10 years. But if you're making a decision for the entire town, that's a wrong decision. We need classrooms where the 2010 facility plan said we ought to build them where the students are, and the West Side needs additional seats and classrooms. And so, so the employment and enrollment answer got kicked aside. And then finally, they come up with a, well, where's the plan? Every year that I went before the Board of Finance with the, with the Fall Capital Workshop, they always complimented us on the quality of the facilities plans that we put forward. They in fact would frequently say, I wish the town would put it in as much detail as you do. We have a plan. So then finally, they had to say, well, where are the votes? You don't vote something in 2019 that you require information where people actually live for redistricting until 2021. So the idea that we couldn't cast every vote in advance was just nonsensical. It was just a political decision that they made. It's a wrong decision. And so I have no doubt that the project will move forward, and I want the project to move forward. But I think there has to be some voices that say, the state gives the Board of Education the mandate to make these kind of decisions. That is not a decision of the Board of Finance. Is it cost effective or not? And clearly, the building committee showed that those three extra classrooms would be cost effective. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber? She, she told me politely.
Yeah. It's no secret that I supported the 504. I've spoken to it multiple times. And obviously, I was very disappointed with the votes. I was also disappointed in the way in which the doubt about the validity of the board's request was treated. But that said, having been the liaison to this building committee for almost a year, having attended their meetings, seen all the hard work that they've done, the last thing I want to do is slow that work down or stop that work, even if only temporarily. The Mill Hill community has been waiting a very long time for this renovation. I wish I could say it was an expansion, but they're actually losing classroom space now with the new plan. That said, they deserve air conditioning. They deserve all of the other things that are in the EdSpecs short of those three classrooms, which we are in the ed specs, short of those three classrooms, which we have now have to reduce. And I really don't want to delay this any further. So, while I am very disappointed in having to cast this vote, I will happily do it because I want the work of the building committee to continue, and I want the Mill Hill community to get the school that they deserve.
Mr. Peterson?
I'll be brief. I just wanted to say that I, I'm very, I agree with many of the statements that have been made by members of this board, and I've been long on record as favoring a 504 at Mill Hill School. But the one thing that the building committee has asked us for multiple times is certainty, so I'd like to call the question.
Can we vote to call--
I'll take it then.
Okay, vote to call the question?
Call the question, yeah.
To call the question. Mr. Peterson, Mr. Asa, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, in favor?
Opposed.
Mrs. Lieber, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
You need six.
Let's say it's four, four. So, Ms. Jacobson?
Are you done, Jac?
I'm done.
Sorry, I would like to have a comment. So, let me begin with, I agree with the sentiment of the body that, of course, this project needs to move forward. And Mill Hill deserves its renovation, that it's been long waiting for, and all the projects that are on our waterfall to come that are waiting in line behind it. Any delay of that would only cause delay for everyone else as well, who, we have many, many things that need to get done. With that said, I also shared some questions that, including Mrs. Max and Cannelly already asked about value engineering it out, and what might be possible or not from Mr. Quinn, but he's already answered those questions. Like Mr. Dwyer, I'm not going to support this motion. And not because Mill Hill doesn't need this project, and that I don't support it because I very much so do. To the Madam Chair of this board, you're not the one who should be apologizing this evening, or in the last week. I think much of our community has expressed a desire that the apology of where that needs to come from. And we are waiting for that today. I'll share the sentiment of how the both of you were treated at that meeting as grossly The Board of Finance is to decide money, to stay in that lane, and not get into the business of our plans, or what we feel is necessary for the children and the staff of this district. And there needs to be a voice, I agree very much so, that says what they did was wrong, and that they need to stay in their lane going forward, and what we are going to consider in the future about making sure that happens. So, I hope that this passes, the project moves forward. Mr. Quinn, thank you so much for you and the building committee's work on this. But I feel like, too, that we need to be, at this point, starting to take a greater stand.
Any last comments by board members? Mrs. Lieber?
I just want to share that I also feel the same way as Mr. Dwyer and Mrs. Jacobson, that, of course, Mill Hill deserves this renovation, but I think it sends a really confusing message for it to appear in the newspaper tomorrow that the Board of Education unanimously approved a 441 after being on the record for a year, that we believe what's appropriate for our district and systemically is a 504, and that it is our job as elected officials to plan for the foreseeable future and beyond, and that we should be treated with respect to make those decisions, as we are in the weeds for hours upon hours to know all of those details. And as a bit of a side note, the way you two were treated is a big deterrent to other members of our community getting involved, running for office, participating in the way our town works. And I think that is a real shame, because we're all invested in making our community a better place because we love it so much. And to feel that to volunteer your time and to be treated with such disrespect is the reward for that effort, I think sends a really deleterious message to stepping up and, and participating in our, in our community. So, I also will be voting against this motion.
Any other board members?
I hope you know that I support the 504. I will not be voting for it tonight. I will be voting to change the ed spec. I feel it's my responsibility as leader of this board to move this, to really just stand behind the work that's been done by the building committee, and to look forward to just accepting that it didn't go our way. I'm very unhappy. I don't want to really repeat some of the sentiments expressed by other board members, but I do share them. But I think the focus right now needs to be on making sure that we give the building committee and the staff the, the support they need to get the paperwork in order, to apply for the state, to the state, so we can get the reimbursement in order, because we want to move this forward. So, I will be voting to change the ed spec tonight. I also thank the building committee for the work that you've done so far, for advocating for our students, and for the work that you will continue to do in the upcoming months. I thank Mrs. Max and Cannelly. I didn't mean to be flippant before about the additional classroom and how much they would cost. I have expressed to the building committee that I would, I'd want to know if there were any opportunities that we could add additional space, that we would want to, to know. And I'm sure the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance would also want to know, because things do change, and as members of the public have stated about, you know, within the community, just over the last week, some of the things that are happening in terms of development, and we're getting in new information. So, I, I would ask for us just to continue to be kept in the loop. I will be in contact with the chair, and I trust Mrs. Gerber to update the board. And with that, I'm going to call, I'm going to call the votes. So, oh, sorry, members of the public, if any members of the public would like to speak to this, come forward. Okay? Mr. Quinn, I really wish you would have been sitting down, like you're standing there. It just seems very, very formal and not very hospitable of our board to just have you standing there.
I promise I won't die, okay? Okay?
Not--
Not this time, anyway.
Not, but--
Just so we all understand each other, okay? It's all good to be incensed about how we were treated by the Board of Finance. And that's me and two, by the way. But there's a creed of good here, and that's the kids at Mill Hill. And I have a fear that we're going to walk away from this with a tie vote or a no vote, okay, because we're incensed on how we feel about the Board of Finance. I want you to feel incensed about fixing Mill Hill. I want you to feel for the kids that go there. That's what I want from you, okay? Very simple. Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me. Put that back to the board. Any last comments before we go? Okay, that the recommended motion, that the Board of Education change the capacity outlined to the Mill Hill educational specifications from 504 to 441 to align with funding approved by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. All in favor? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, all opposed? Mrs. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, motion passes. Five, eight. Sorry. Water went down like the wrong way. Still recovering from that, you know? Very bad joke, Mr. Quinn. Thank you to the building committee. You can stay if you'd like to hear about, you know, school climate and the middle school schedule, but we also invite you to leave.
Good job. Go build this building.
Thank you.
Thank, Dr. Jones, sorry to interrupt you there with that.
Okay, I think we'll go ahead and get started for the climate survey. This is an overview. It's not meant to be going through all 200 pages, so I just wanted to clarify that. You did get the survey results in full electronically, and they're also posted on the web. We had really five kind of overarching focuses with the survey this year that was a little bit different for us. Trying to increase parent response rates for a higher-quality building-level input, so that the, what the principals are getting is usable information for them. Also, to consolidate the teacher and parent survey into one annual survey that is a reasonable length, to see again if we could increase the results of the survey. To reduce the management time here in central office on producing those results, and move away from hand calculating each question on all of these surveys. Also, just to automate the survey calculations in general, and then to provide the results to building leaders no longer than two weeks after the survey closed. So, this was our overall response count this year. The total responses were just over 10,000. That's with 2,965 parent respondents, and that was probably the, the group we were targeting the most, trying to see if we could just get more, more input from our community. When you look at our elementary parent response rate, this is where we saw some of the greatest gains in getting parents to actually take the survey. And if you look at, for instance, the fourth one down on the left, Jennings, during 1617, they only had 32 parents who took the survey. And if you're an elementary principal, 32 really doesn't give you a great deal of information that you really trust, because out of 32, you probably have 10 of them that are upset with you for something. But when you look in general, we really tripled the results. Total responses from parents in 1617 were 541, and this year, we, we were 1,637. And I think it's just from having, again, a different approach, and we've got some good results that principals can really use. Little bit less in secondary, but we still doubled, just fraction over double. So, when you look at, for instance, Ludlow going from 165 this year to 478 responses. So, again, it's just helping us know that the data is more accurate, we're hearing from more people. When you look at parent input, and I know this slide is very small, but in general, our parents really like the school, so most of their responses as a whole are coming in at 90% and above. When we give a survey, we really look at, let's target 85%. 80 is still okay, but anything above 85 is, is good. Above 90 is really good. And in general, what you see from the parents is the school's a great place to learn, it's safe for their child, they feel welcome at the school. It's basically all of those kind of components that make them love their schools. When you look at, when it falls just a little bit to that 85 and 90% range, most of the responses have to do with communication in some way, shape, or form. I know how my child is doing in school before I get my child's report card. I feel well-informed about what's going on. And again, 85 is still a very good response rate, but most of these, it has to do with communication, and that's not surprising in any school district. I think it's one of the greatest challenges we have, and I think we even saw that tonight when you look at all of the discussions you've had about pre-K this year. And it's just very difficult to get information out, especially in such a large community. Some of the areas to probe from the parent's perspective, the school offers me many ways to be involved in my child's education. 78% of our parents said that that was accurate. We have heard from our PTA that primarily part of this has to do with the way our schools are locked down now for safety. And if you are a parent, especially that has older children, and maybe you've gone through the elementary over a decade, you've seen a difference in how open and accessible our schools are, and that's been necessary, but it's something we can continue to work on. My child has been insulted, teased, made fun at school. 30% of our parents did yes. Bullying is a problem at this school, 22%. And again, if you look at it from the other, it's almost 80% said no, but 22% is still higher than we would like, so we want to continue to work on that. Also, if you just look at the, down at the bottom, unsatisfied with the steps to provide a safe environment, I put that one in there, it's simply because 93 is really high, but what is it for that other small percentage that we're not doing that would make people not think that we're taking the right steps? When we look at our teacher and staff surveyed, this is our classroom teachers, specialist teachers, and non-certified instructional staff like pairs and ed trainers. From our teacher and staff perspective, not, when you look at that 90% and above, our adults treat students with respect. I know what is expected of me at this school, so our teachers are understanding what those expectations are. Down towards the middle, they receive timely feedback on their performance. The principal sets high expectations and progress towards goals. And if you look down the bottom, staff respect each other's differences. When it drops down to 85 and 90, it's really looking at how the students respond. It really, teacher responses, when we rate ourselves as educators, we tend to rate ourselves higher. When we rate our students, we tend to rate their behavior usually is a little bit lower. Students treat adults with respect. School administrators value teacher feedback. I think our teachers even heard that tonight. They're always wanting more teacher voice. School administrators communicate a clear vision for the school. But again, 85 is still very strong. When we look at some of the areas to probe, in this school, there's honest communication on important school issues. Again, it comes back to communication is always one of the greatest challenges. The school discipline program is effective. Our teachers, and it depends on the building, so keep it in mind, this is the whole district. This is where you get some building differences, and whether or not their discipline program is working effectively. The staff morale is another one. It depends on the building, and every building principal drills down to look at their own building. Looking at professional development to provide strategies to meet the needs of students, this is something we continue to work on all the time. But again, when you look at that bottom area, most of what they want to see as probe has to do with student behavior or teacher voice. From the elementary student input, when we're looking at 90% and above, they love their school. There are consequences for breaking rules, they have friends, they do believe their teachers and adults, you know, teach them to be kind. The school has enough space for teaching, learning, and activities. From the 85 and 90, when it drops just a little bit, I feel like I belong, there's a type at this school. When I do a good job, my teacher tells me. We'd love to see that just a little bit higher. And teachers and adults at my school help students when others are being mean. When we look at our elementary student input on areas to probe, my school is clean and nice. It depended on the school. Some of our schools rated their schools as not as clean or nice, and I think that probably has to do with some of these buildings that haven't been renovated. I feel safe in the cafeteria, bathrooms, hallways, bus, and you'll see a comparison slide to secondary here in just a minute with this. Overall, the bathrooms, that's where more students in, in elementary have concerns. And there's at least one adult school that I can talk to about a problem or a concern, 83% for elementary. And we would like to see that higher. This is third, fourth, and fifth graders. We really want every child to connect with at least one adult in our schools. It's, it's hard work, but that gives us something, again, that we know we can focus on going forward. When we look at our secondary student input, that's 90% and above, my school has adequate resources for learning, teachers listen to me when I speak in class, there are plenty of opportunities to get involved in sports, clubs, other activities. And that 85 to 90%, I like my school, that was right at 90. I like my school building, high expectations for learning, would recommend my school to others. Our secondary students are probably a little bit tougher on this survey than elementary. When we look at some of the areas to probe in secondary, my school is kept clean and well-maintained, and that was 83%. And again, it really, that's more attributed to which school site, and one school site was, the students rated that school much lower, and it is an older building. High expectations for teaching, which was interesting, that the, how the students saw the teaching aspect. Have opportunities to express myself. This next question, we added a little bit more to this, this year. Plenty of opportunities to get involved in sports, club, and activities. 93% of our secondary students said yes. But when we ask, I am involved in after-school activity or club, 62%. I'm involved in athletics at school, 48%. And this is one of those statistics the boards ask us the last two years, if we had better data on that, and this is coming straight from our students. And why do you not participate in club activities or athletics? The number one item was, I have too much homework, which was 49% of those responding. The second one was, I'm not interested. Then, I participate in other community activities, I work after school. And then 13% was, I don't have transportation to get home. And that was, again, a question we added to the survey, because it does add to the climate for secondary, and the question the board has asked, not running late buses, is it impacting some of our students? I think they've given us an answer. Also, a couple more areas for secondary, students at my school respect differences in students, and these are just, I think, some questions the board would like to see. Again, it's almost 80%, 79. I've gone for extra help outside of class, so again, we have a lot of teachers doing things outside of class time, 73%. I'll jump down to the bottom, and I know that high school takes this seriously. Students at my school think it's okay to cheat, about 36% of our secondary students. And it's okay to cheat if other students are cheating, was 46%. So, those are, again, just conversations we want to continue to have. So those are, again, just conversations we want to continue to have. They're young people, it's part of growth and development, but it does let us know some conversations that are good to continue up to probe. This elementary and secondary slide is really to look at those safety concerns and it was asking the same question from the climate about where they feel safe. The one thing that I was looking at was, we hear a lot about secondary bathrooms. You would have thought that our elementary students would feel better about the restrooms than our high schoolers by what we hear, but actually, even though it's very close, the bathroom, 68% feel safe. And in the high school, it was 73. So it was actually better at high school. At the buses, a little bit safer. Elementary, pretty much it was a wash. And then when you look again at that bottom question about, there's at least one adult in my school that I can learn to, that I can talk to about a problem or concern, that dropped in high school to 68%. So that's a big area for us, I think, coming from a climate survey, again, that we know we've got to help find a way for all of our students to be able to connect with at least one adult in the building. And again, the detailed results for this are on FairfieldSchools.org and it's under the district tab. And then you'll see where the climate is there and you can click on that if you'd like to look at the more detailed results. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Jones? Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you. First, just congrats on really getting that response rate so much higher. It's really fantastic and astonishing, actually, what you were able to achieve there. So that's my first, just overall comment. My second question was, or my first question is, I'm sorry, I didn't actually see this actual data in my email, so I must have missed it along the way and I'll definitely read the full report. But is it disaggregated by any chance by some of these questions, either by level? Because I know these are averages, so is there a level breakdown or a school breakdown in either of these?
The principals have the school breakdown, but it's not on the web right now. We've just put the district out there.
Okay, so, but within the report, is there like elementary, middle, high, that kind of a thing, or is it just averages?
We can. And I actually, I mean, I have a copy of that where I could give you a little bit more detail, but we haven't put that out there. We're really trying hard to get, yeah.
Not like school, but just level? You know, element, yeah, okay. Right, that, let me see. Disaggregate, disaggregate. I don't think I had... Just, I guess, the other real comment was, just the comment on the late buses is a little heartbreaking. That was a little upsetting, just as a comment, but that's it for right now. Thanks. Until I read the further report, I'll follow up.
Mrs. Maxicanelli?
Obviously, lots of things I'd love to comment on, but I, the key is, is that, and I do believe this, is that those building administrators are really going to board, you know, bear down on some of these details, especially those areas to probe, but I appreciate that level of detail. On the very, on the second slide, that 2018-19 focus, thank you for that summary of those five points. One question I had is that, were any questions dropped? You made reference to certain things being added, but are there certain data points that we're no longer collecting?
Yes. We actually cross-referenced the two surveys, so some of the questions were the same. Then if they had, if they asked the same question in two or three different ways, we may have, gosh, this is loud, they may have taken like one or two of those off. We have, the other thing is at the end of the last survey, there were about 12 questions that were all demographic. And if you went back and looked at the 16 data, a lot of people chose not to answer them. They didn't, I think they were uncomfortable talking about whether or not they're free and reduced and what their ethnicity was. And we do so much of that, especially, I mean, we've got RISEP survey, we've got S-Back, we've got, we've got data coming out our ears. So keeping this as simple as possible where we can get authentic responses from families and students that we can use was really the focus.
Thank you. And obviously, unfortunately, I think some of that demographic information would have been really, and I certainly understand if they're not going to answer it and they feel it's any kind of invasion, then good reason to get rid of it. On the other hand, to disaggregate by some of those subgroups could have also given us some really valuable information because I agree with your highlight that, that being able to connect with an adult in your school is really a vital data point. And I would certainly hope that that's something that the administrators, administrators, especially in secondary, will really take a look at.
Yeah, and I will just say, the interesting thing for me, because I wondered if there was one school that was higher than the other. So we can go in and disaggregate by school, you know, we can look at their grade. It was actually Woods, which was fascinating to me. And is that because they pull from such a large kind of area and they don't drive? So, you know, why transportation would be more challenging? That I don't know. But that was actually our building that had the highest, where it was the most challenging.
Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
There's a lot in this survey to be proud of. And I'm glad that that kind of information is put forward, but I'm equally pleased that the staff have put forward those areas that we need to improve. Because this district is always better when it both celebrates what's good and focuses on what needs to be improved. You'd like to think that we could get to a place in society that not a single student would feel bullied or threatened or insulted. Maybe that goal is too much, but when I read through this stuff, I'm going to say on average, about 10% of our students feel that something's just not right. And so we can focus on the 90%, but this board has always focused on those subgroups that need help. Whether it's special education, we ask the question, is there a difference between boys and girls? Is there a difference in achievement gap between different elementary schools? We always seem to focus our conversation on where is the need the greatest? And so I would hope that the staff will place a focus on that 10%. And maybe say, so next year, should it be 5%? Should it be, what is the level where we say, we've moved the needle? And so I think we should congratulate the positive school climate, but let's focus on what needs to be fixed as well.
Can you just speak about the next steps in terms of staff? What they're going to be doing with this?
Depending on the, depending on the building, the principals present this to their staff and most of them use this as part of their site improvement as well on things they want to focus on. Part of, part of changing this a little bit this year is now we have one survey every year. It's consistent, it's not so long that people will take it. I think the next thing, we'll be getting input back, is there another question that we want to ask based on what we heard? Because now that it's given every year, you could even have four questions that you flip-flop every other year, getting every two-year data. But, you know, like having an adult in the building, could you drill down farther on that? And I think that's the work that's going to come next. Mr. Mancusi and I were just in a conversation about that today.
Mr. Mancusi?
Hi, Rob Mancusi, Director of Special Education. We will be convening a district climate meeting in September to review, you know, briefly, each of the buildings will review their surveys and their areas of focus. We will look for themes across the district. And just like we build programs and services for students around social, emotional learning, we will highlight areas to kind of help students feel more connected. And, you know, Mr. Dwyer makes an excellent point to focus on that 10%, so we want all students to feel connected.
Are parents on the district climate team?
They will be.
And are there, are the climate teams in the schools? Are they still active?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobson?
I just want to follow up with your point about that, that the legislature just passed a very comprehensive school climate law. And I forget the effective date, but it's going, has several new requirements for us in terms of school climate councils and who has to be on it and a lot of different things in there. So that would probably be coming in our legislative update when we get that from our legal team.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Middle school schedule presentation, Mr. Cummings?
Good evening. Mike Cummings, Chief Academic Officer. I'm joined this evening by our three middle school principals, Dr. Gary Rosato from Fairfield Woods, Meg Tylee from Roger Ludlow, and Anthony Formato from Tomlinson. And way in the backseat is our assistant principals. I'd like to thank them for coming out this evening as well. This has been a work of many months among the middle school administration as well as the middle school teachers. And in the presentation tonight, we hope to give you, our intention is to give you an update on where we are in a scheduled process review. We are going to see a number of questions. I want to assure you that these are questions we're in the process of answering. But we've really framed this, this presentation as to be as inclusive as possible and to use the idea of questions to talk about the things that we're still confronting as well as some of the issues that we feel that the, our stakeholders, primarily our parents and students, will face as well as we consider schedule changes. So going through this... And so the questions begin. We looked, these were the primary motivators, excuse me, one second. These are the primary motivators to, as we began to look at the schedule. I won't engage in reading all of these with you, I know you're capable of that. But essentially what we wanted to do was look at how we can take what we value the most in our current schedule and program and bring that forward as well as address some of the challenges that we now face with the tasks in front of us of educating our students to the vision of the graduate, our learning principles, our graduation requirements, our academic expectations, and certainly, as we'll talk about in a couple minutes, the curriculum, the challenges that have, changes that have taken place in the, many of our curricular areas over the past 10 years. Members of the board have seen this before. This is our learning principles that were developed by our teachers and our administrators last year. This really are our attempt to summarize the educational environment which we feel, we value in Fairfield, which we see as necessary to promote the level of learning, skill acquisition that our students require in fulfillment of that vision of the graduate, the academic expectations, and the graduation requirements. Now, as I said before, we are cognizant of the curricular changes that have taken place since 2009 in the adoption of Common Core and ELA in math, but they've since been joined by the College Career and Civic Life, or the C3 that impacted social studies. And then the next generation science standards, both of those in 2013. And then the National Core Arts Standards, which as you know from your recent approval of the music curriculum, and you'll be learning more about in the art curriculum next year, have impacted those areas as well. Each of these are united by, or each of these core areas, these curricular areas are united by what we've identified as transfer skills. So our curriculum program directors went through their curricular documents looking for commonalities around what united their curricular areas, rather than see them as separate documents, what in general, what are the themes of what's changing? And just to point out some of the language here that you'll see, things like variety of texts, critical thinkers and informed practitioners, revise research questions, credible resources, synthesize information, design a product to communicate, deliberate, excuse me, deliberate message using domain-specific language, substantiated evidence, self-monitor and make sense of problems, persevere, reflect, and refine, collaborate with others to enhance collective ideas. All of these issues, all of these tasks, all of these skills that we're looking to develop in students pre-K12 really have an impact on the amount of time we devote in class. And one of the essential questions that we faced from the very beginning of this task, the questions that drove us to this task, was the current middle school schedule time periods lengthy enough to allow students to engage in this level of deeper, deeper learning. This essentially has been the process. We've been engaged since the fall. We initially started in September with our team liaisons from each of the three middle schools to develop a list of priorities, which I'll share with you in a second. We reviewed 12 middle school schedules as well as our own high school schedule. We did work, many, let me just elaborate on those, those middle school schedules that we looked at, a lot of those came from our staff. They identified, were aware of other schedules in the area that we thought, that they thought deserved a closer look. We developed common questions as an administrative team and we began essentially with a phone survey, surveying those schools to get information about their schedules. We did follow up then with two site visits to the schools that we thought were the most interest to us, Shelton and North Branford. We included a majority of teachers on those site visits. And then we held a community conversation in March as well as we just recently conducted a parent survey. So this, this process has been ongoing, again, throughout the academic year and, and as you'll learn, will continue through the summer and into the fall. Our core commitments, these were identified by our teachers and administrators. Again, the idea was, what do you value in what we have and where do you see need for change? By far, the most valued item that we currently have is maintaining the team model, which is essentially the idea behind a middle school as opposed to a junior high. Providing time for interventions and enrichment opportunities. Providing professional development to support any change in the instructional block. Improving the core, the pace of the day, primarily through fewer transitions, and longer instructional opportunities. Some of these ideas, as you could see, are interrelated. Based decisions in neuroscience and educational research. Equity and accessibility to all subjects. Lunch by grade level. In middle school, you always have to have something about lunch. Commit to the existing contractual language. Maintain opportunities for teachers to collaborate and a commitment to a home base for all students, essentially some type of homeroom structure. So these were the, these were, again, the ideas of what we wanted to persist and where we saw opportunities for additions. Now, in May, we conducted this, just in the last couple of weeks, we conducted a parent survey. And this survey went out to parents in four, five, six, seven, and eighth grade, ninth grade as well, excuse me. We were looking for a wide swath of people, both with experience in middle school and people who did not have experience in middle school. And we only asked three questions. And I will tell you that some of the feedback I got from individual members of the community was around context. And they didn't, they struggled a bit with the questions because they didn't have context. And that's something that we learned from and I think has something to say in the results you'll see, but certainly speaks to one of our future needs. So this first question, do you believe the middle school schedule should have longer learning periods than the current 45 minutes? Now, unlike the administrators and teachers, the majority of parents that responded to the survey, because I'm going to show you some contrasting data in a minute, the majority of parents, the great majority of parents who responded to the survey, did not believe that we needed longer than 45 minutes. The second question, should the middle school schedule include a dedicated time to support student needs for intervention and/or enrichment? And overwhelmingly here, there's a positive response to that, to the need for that. And then the last question we asked, should students have choice of their electives? And again, the overwhelming response to this was yes. There may have seemed to be some incongruity in this question because the very idea of elective seems to indicate choice, but in our current program, current middle school program offerings, there are some essentially required electives. Essentially, you know, music being one. All students take music sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Now, let me just jump back, or let me preface this. In March, March 26th, we conducted a community conversation at Fairfield Woods in the evening. In March, March 26th, we conducted a community conversation at Fairfield Woods in the evening. We had about, I believe our number was 82. We had 82 parents there that night. It was, I think, a very well-attended event. And what we framed for them, you know, it's back to this idea of context, we provided them some context to the work we were doing. For instance, we shared those core commitments, those two slides that I shared with you previous. We talked a little bit about the curricular changes that were necessitating the, at least the beginning of this conversation. And then what we essentially engaged, we talked very little. We engaged instead the parents in an activity where they then identified the pluses of the current program and schedule, and then identified things that they wanted to change. And then they posted those, and for those of you who might have been part of the vision of the graduate conversation a year prior, it was a similar activity. They voted with colored stickers on the things that they saw as the highest priority. And this, this is a synthesis essentially of those responses. So benefits of the current schedule, and you'll see some symmetry to what the teachers and administrators identified. Again, number one was the team, the grouping of students by team. Homeroom, that home base idea, the idea of consistency of schedule for a week and five days, lunch with peers, it's important to everybody. Unified arts gives a variety of exposure, and I'm, this, by the way, the language here is all from bullets that were, bulleted phrases that were on the chart paper. And then the idea of world language, very much a commitment to the idea of continuing the world language program in the middle school. And then we broke out some of the responses by topic. So this one is on instructional time. This, there was a strong reaction in this group to support for a longer instructional period. We had shared with them some of the background on the, what the current high school schedule looks like, and we had provided them with a copy of our current middle school schedule. And so parents responded to the idea that students would need a longer time. I want to be clear here that we're playing with different lengths of that time, but we've not finalized the time. We're still in the process of starting to draft schedules, so different, but a longer block than 45 minutes. The recess and a need for fresh air. Reduce the pace, again, this issue of decreasing anxiety by focusing on fewer subjects per day, remain mindful of what is appropriate for the age level. And the idea surfaced in this conversation that maybe sixth grade would look different from seventh and eighth grade, for example, the length of the time period. So there was some conversation around what a split schedule might look like. There was very strong support for the need for interventions and enrichment. And so this idea I want to share with you, we saw in practice at Shelton Intermediate School. They essentially have an ongoing period or time during the day where students who need academic support or interventions get it. Students who don't are offered an enrichment period. So this is like an extracurricular class that classroom-certified teachers provide. And so there's an ability for kids during the course of the day to get either the support they need in core subject, math or ELA, or if they do not need that support, they get this additional period that are relatively like mini-courses, essentially that run through the, run through the course of the year. And there was, when that idea was explained, there was, again, excuse me, strong support for this, and it showed up in a couple of different ways. The idea, and people provided ideas on what we could be providing, giving during those enrichment periods, things like study skills, organization, more built-in opportunities to focus on the social, emotional, and an open-choice type block. We asked for some feedback on our program offerings, and again, the idea of the ability to do labs during science, which reinforces the need for a longer block than we currently have. There was a number of concerns with the fact that students are pulled out for band and miss curricular areas for that. And also, there was a number of different ways of supporting the idea of increasing STEM or/steem opportunities for students, more hands-on learning, and then the idea that art, rather than being offered only once during the course of the year, if there was a way to offer multiple art classes, or art, different art classes during the course of the year, that students could take multiple art. So these are the, kind of where we find ourselves now as we begin to put pen to paper or fingers on the keypad as we try to figure out what the schedule might look like and as we move forward. So first challenge, how do we make desired changes, and what elements of the current schedule and program do we retain? We've had this conversation with, amongst ourselves and with everybody else. You can't go forward with a new schedule and keep everything carried with you. Some things are going to have to be dropped or modified. So what is that? What do we, what do we reprioritize, as it were? What will be the required in the elective courses? How do we adapt the proposals to current contracts? What are the budgetary impacts of proposed changes? How can a schedule support intervention offerings and the SRBI process? One of the things that we're dealing with, and ancillary note to this, is that our current SRBI supports are rather limited in scope, so how could a schedule possibly open up more tiered interventions for students than we currently have? How can a schedule support enrichment opportunities? And how does our schedule best support the social and emotional health of students? And finally, our next steps. We clearly have to address community concerns on the period length. We have to provide professional learning for our staff on teaching in longer periods. We have to review programmatic changes and impacts. We have to think about, clearly, if we're going to change up, for example, our elective program, what might we be considering to do that? And how might that obviously have an impact on space, budgets, staffing, those types of things? We have to finalize our schedule drafts and determine the FTE and budget impacts, and we come, I plan to, intend to come back to see you in late fall to provide you an update on the schedule. If we're moving forward, as we intend to in 2021 with a schedule, bring drafts of that forward. The community will continue to be involved, our teachers will be continued to be involved throughout the fall as we work on these things, so. That concludes our presentation, and if you have questions, I'd be glad to be quiet and turn it over to my colleagues, or even the people in the backseats.
Mrs. Maxx Canelli?
Just very briefly, I'm going to pretend you didn't have a tone on that, Mrs. Vitale. First of all, very importantly, thank you for the community conversation of March. I think parents really appreciated that specific outreach, that they had that chance to come. I heard a little buzz from parents who weren't able to go. You know, there was a really what's-going-on kind of mood, and knowing that that opportunity was there, whether they could avail themselves of it or not, I think that was very much appreciated. You know, as we're obviously hearing tonight from parents at elementary schools, and we're talking about change up here, and they don't feel like they've had that input, it's vital for having that buy-in when you're talking about change. So just a thanks for that. My only question, because I think obviously a lot still has to be said, I guess two things. One, on your core commitments two slide, you said, "Commit to existing contractual language." Has there been an issue that we don't, aren't aware of?
Oh, yes. Well, yes, that is the question. I think, one, we have to think, be mindful of limitations in the contract on class sizes, the number of periods that people teach, you know, just even the switch from a, from a five-day period, five days, five preps a day, to what a split schedule or high school schedule might look like. We've got to work through that with staff. That primarily is the issues we see.
Okay, so it's not a reflection that we're doing something that there's concern about, it's what we move to if there could be that, oh yeah, this is a great idea, but now you're running afoul of the contract, correct?
That's right.
Okay. And that's it for me, except I just want to put my plug in there that with whatever has worked out for this enrichment time, please, please have a rule that is absolute, I don't care how you do it, of no electronics. Please do that, because it is so easy to fall by. Again, I'm not sure what the, the freedom of that time will involve, and it's easy for a student to say, "I'll use the time well and productively," and I don't know how that's monitored, but just please beware, it's something, obviously, the board was already concerned about with the Chromebooks, but between those and phones, just, I'll share that, that that would be a tremendous concern of mine, because that obviously would not be what is intended by that enrichment block.
You're opposed to the class that would involve kids bringing in their switches, their Xboxes? You don't like that idea?
No.
Yeah. All right, we'll make a note of that.
Ms. Pickham.
Sorry, I was a little late to your meeting, so my big question is, what brought on the need to change the schedule? Is there something we need to fix, or is it simply that we're moving forward with these transferable skills?
So one of our big drivers is around our early intervention process. At the moment, we have a 24-minute flex time in the morning, and that time is used, if a student is out sick and needs to meet with a teacher, they can sort of jump around and gather that information from various teachers. We have students that go down that are interested in art for that 24 minutes, but as far as our tiered interventions and supporting those students in need, it's, it's difficult without a block of time to provide that, that level of intervention. And we found in our data that we have, we need to do more to support those students. And in the two site visits we went on, both schools had that intervention block, and we're finding success in their data around that intervention block. The extension block, we would see as, and I think about it, Roger Ludlow Middle School, we do, in the seventh grade level, for example, a Genius Hour, which allows students to probe areas of interest. It could be something around executive functioning, it would, we'd look, have to look at where that need is, but we need more time for that intervention block, and we believe we could get great resource out of that extension block as well.
Also, as was pointed out in the slide presentation, some of the movements nationally in terms of what we're expected to deliver in terms of a school program, most recently the NGSS standards, as well as others, require time to work with the material, to do some deep thinking, to have some extended conversations, to really understand and master the content. It's high-level, these are middle schoolers processing a variety of things throughout the day, seven periods, and switching on and off to a variety of content areas every day. They've been doing it, and they've been doing it quite successfully, but things have changed on the national landscape, and we are expected to, and we want to, develop these skills in our students, and we're finding we're bumping up against that dismissal time at the end of the period, just as we're getting into things pretty deeply. So, you know, that's, that's another reason that I think we want to take a look at. I mean, it's an exciting proposition to think about how we use the time. Our middle school schedule has not been looked at in many, many years, I want to say, over 20 years. And a lot has changed in the way we deliver instruction, all the assessments that go on within the school system in the last 20 years, all of the additions that have been added to our programs, wonderful additions, such as early interventions, our music program. Where do we find the time to do it all, do it all well, and not fragment the students and, of course, the teachers? So I think it's a really good time. Time is probably our most valuable commodity, notwithstanding the wonderful budget you provide to us every year, which does keep our schools going, but our time is, is finite, and how we divide up those six and a half, seven hours is critical, especially at this, this point in their, in their development. So I'm excited by the proposition. We do have challenges in front of us, but I think all of those things combined has kind of brought this to a head.
Ms. Lieber?
I just, thank you, I found this really interesting, and I want to share my excitement for the idea of these enrichment blocks, including life skills. And I think it's really exciting anytime you can provide students an opportunity to feel like what they're learning is relevant to their lives, and I look forward to hearing more about how you guys could possibly develop that.
Anybody else?
I have just, Ms. Jacobson? I'm just thinking about our new graduation requirements as well, and opportunities we've built into those graduation requirements for our eighth graders in particular. So as you imagine, some of these changes, I'm thinking possibly that might open up more opportunities in that world, and it's not something to answer on right now, but that could be feasible to, beyond just the couple that we can do right now, given the limitation, right? So, yeah, okay, good. For the parent survey, I'm just kind of curious, and you may not know the answer to this. When the high school moved to the block schedule, was surveys done then? Was it a similar apprehension among parents?
I was part of the high school transition to the block, but I don't recall there being apprehension to the, to the extended periods. I think the transition was handled really well at the school with the amount of professional development we did with the teachers and the staff, and it was a transition period, but I don't remember surveying the parents and having any input based on what we saw here, any uproar, any discomfort with the extended period.
If I could just add one thing, as part of our research, Mr. Cummings referred to that we looked at 12 sort of area schools and gathered schedules from various teachers and input. They ranged from Virginia, mainly in Connecticut, but we also sent a team, Mr. D'Angelo and Mr. Dr. Buglies took a trip to the high school and spoke to freshmen that had gone through the middle school schedule most recently, and wanted their input on, what do you guys think about the block? And they were very much in favor of it in their conversation.
And then, I had children go to the high school with the block and without the block, big fan of the block, just going to put it out there, but I also remember the transition of going from the regular schedule to the block, and there being concerns, and a lot of parents were very upset, and I think that there eventually was buy-in, and I'm just wondering if maybe some of your colleagues at the high school level could maybe just give you some assistance in changing that grid in particular. And if Mr. Hattis is here, or Mr. Evelyn, if you have anything to add, if not, that's fine too, but...
They have all our support.
Thank you.
I, sorry, I just want to add to that. I did find it interesting when we made the calls, because we were looking at schools that had a similar schedule to what we have, and maybe they had an intervention block that works for them. We looked at an area school that has what I would call a modified block, which I was interested in, and then we looked at block schedules. I, was most interesting to me that the schools with our current type schedule and the modified block, when I spoke with, the schools that I spoke with, they said, "We hate our schedule. When you figure it out in your block, give us a call back."
Mrs. Maxx Canelli?
I just want to piggyback on what you just said, and I vividly remember the meeting held at Ludlow where it, I'm not going to say it was a packed house, but there were a lot of people there, and what was incredibly valuable about it, as Mr. Hattis and Mr. Evelyn made the, the presentation, was the give and take, and I, and maybe I'm making this up, but there were actually staff members who were taking notes of parents' concerns, so it was not waiting till it was a final product. It's, here's where we are right now, this is fairly polished, and my recollection is that they were very appreciative of the feedback that they got. You know, that's where the minis are, you know, evolved and other aspects, so it, it wasn't just a snap, roll-up, they got a chance for some pretty valuable feedback, is my recollection.
I think we were farther along in the process at that point, and we were presenting two schedules, and I don't think we're at that point yet. So I think when we're presenting two schedules, you can have more of a, you know, a focused conversation, but I think at this point, we're still open-ended, so we're not there yet.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, board members? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a recommendation?
Yes?
Being that the next three items, or the next two items on the agenda will probably entail some discussion, in the spirit of moving things around tonight, I'm not sure if there's any way we might be able to move up Ms. Munzel to the food service summary. I might be totally wrong, but I don't anticipate a long conversation on that.
Ms. Dr. Jones, time-wise, will that be?
If it's, if the board doesn't make it long, they will definitely not make it long. Last year it was short.
Do I have the unanimous consent of the board, just to move that forward? Any objections? Okay, seeing... Okay, seeing none. Ms. Munzel?
This way we get to continue the discussion on lunch. Doreen Munzel, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services, with me tonight. I have Rick Emery from Witzens, he's a district manager, and Maura O'Malley is our, is the Witzens District Food Service Director here, on-site. So in your packet, the information that was provided, there was a financial statement, meals, meal count, and a lunch price comparison that we always provide. The financial statement, we'll start with that, we're doing well. As you can see, the guaranteed minimum from Witzens is $95,000 for the year. We're already at the end of April at almost $172,000. That's a gross profit, we have to take district expenses after that, but we're doing well financially. On the meals, there's two, the reasons why there's two documents is, we always compare lunch meal, the average meals from year to year, so we did 18, 2017, 18, and 1819, but we discovered when we were, when we were reviewing the current year, that the 2018 numbers were wrong that we presented last year. They were attendance numbers and not enrollment numbers. So we gave, we gave you a second document that corrected that for the 17 and 18 comparison. But as you can see, even though enrollment's slightly down, overall, the meals are going up, especially at the high school level. And then, in the price comparison, we are not recommending a price increase for next year.
Rick and Maura will speak more about the program, if you want to hear more about the program.
Good evening, board members. I'd like just to point out, too, that we are very proud that participation is up in our schools. We have a new nutrition innovator who has been with the program for several years now, and it was a internal promotion, and what we did was, we identified schools that had lower participation, for instance Dwight, and she went up, we both went up and worked with our manager at Dwight, and made some changes, made, got her input, and as you can see, the results were that we did have an increase in participation there. We will be focusing in next year on Holland Hill, which did have a drop, a slight drop in enrollment, so our numbers are down at that school as well, and North Stratfield. So those will be our focus schools, but we're very proud of the accomplishments that we had at Dwight, and also Sherman. In addition, we also have a registered dietitian who works with us two days a week, and what Brianna does is, Brianna works with the second and fourth graders, arranges classes in the 11 elementary schools, and she, her topic this year was breakfast, and how important breakfast is as a part of their day, and so we got positive feedback from the children that, that they were, they were learning that they should have breakfast before they come to school, and then when Brianna would go visit. In addition, Brianna is, receives referrals from our school nurses with children who have dietary, dietary needs, or need special diets, and what we do is, we meet with our parents and the stu, our manager at the high, the, at the individual school, and go over the menu requirements of those children, and then we design a menu that'll be compatible for those children. The, what the parents do is, they email us 24 hours in advance and tell us what their children would like to have. What we try and do is offer an item that is very similar to what their classmates are eating, so they don't feel excluded, it's not something separate or different, and we try, our recipes make it look as close to a pizza as possible, although it's gluten-free. So we, we're making strides in the district, very proud of the fact that in the superintendent's report, that the cafeterias are a very safe place for the children, so I'm very proud of that percentage too as well. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, this is a vote, so any members of the public would like to speak to... Put the motion on the table first, sorry, getting ahead of myself. Approval of participation in the healthy food certification program, recommend a motion that the Board of Education approve participation in the healthy food certification program for the school year 2019, 2020, as follows. Healthy food option pursuant... Oh, that, I would, that would be wonderful.
As follows.
Yeah. As follows.
I'll move the motion.
Okay. Ms. Dwyer moves the motion, second by Ms. Pickow.
Now out to the public.
Yeah, any other, before I go to the public, any other discussion? Seeing none, back to the public. Any public comment on this issue? If so, please come forward, state your name and record, name for the address. Woo-hoo. Your name and address for the record. Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor of this very long motion? Motion passes 9-0. Thank you very much. Okay.
Just two parts to that motion, but you got it.
Yeah, did you? Yep. I got it. One, yeah, I did. Okay, so moving on to approval of ECC site for 2020. We're passing out the board, the timeline proposed, that the Board of Education approve the ECC site timeline. And to recap for the public... Make a motion, Mr. Asa, second in, Ms. Lieber. To recap, this is for 2020, which has the ECC at Holland Hill, the ECC at North Stratfield, and the ECC at Stratfield. Moving forward, it would be east for 2021, 2022, ECC at Holland Hill, ECC at North Stratfield. Next year, for 2019, 2020, the ECC Ward would stay in place. There would be, if approved, work at North Stratfield in preparation for the summer of, North Stratfield preparation in summer of 2020, and Stratfield's pre-K begins year three, where pre-K moves to Stratfield next year. Any discussion? Mr. Asa?
So just a few things on this. One, I want to thank all the members of the administration, Dr. Jones, Mr. McQusy, for all the information you've presented over the last months, several months. I'd like to thank the staff of the ECC and all the parents who have advocated. I will say, I have learned an incredible amount about the program, and am very supportive of it, and I think as we move forward, it's very important for us to all work together to educate the broader community about this program, because I still think that it's a hidden gem, and most people just don't know what it is. Over these last several months, I've put a lot of thought into this, and when we started this exploration and multi-location talk, it was also predicated on Mill Hill being a 504 school. So, a lot of, from what I understand, the rubric and everything going into recommending these locations included that size school. Now, we have a different situation, obviously, based on what we've done tonight and where we're moving forward. That being said, looking at this over time and taking everything into consideration that I have heard from all parties, I will be making a motion for an amendment to this timeline tonight. I don't necessarily want to do it right away, in case there are other people tonight that want to comment, and maybe have suggestions on an amendment, but just to throw it out there, my amendment would read, to make a motion with the Board of Education approve the ECC site timeline as amended, maintain ECC Ward six classrooms, maintain Stratfield, and add North Stratfield School as enrollment increases, or to reduce the number of Stratfield classrooms in the future. And in doing this, I realize that it takes Holland Hill out of the game in this timeline, but I think, based on everything else going on, I think we're going to have a lot of work ahead of us, and I think it's something that we can do, looking long-term at a plan for the town in the next 10 years with our facilities. And I don't want to necessarily say I'm, I want to put a pause on this, but in essence, it's kind of what it is, where it's basically taking what we have here for 19 and 20, and pushing it out a couple of years. And I think in doing so, we obviously realize that we don't have the capacity at Ward. I don't think we should abandon Ward any longer. That's my personal opinion. I think we should keep it there, and at Stratfield, and then, again, as I mentioned, as part of the amendment. And, and I do feel that in the next year, we are going to be able to tackle what our long-range plan looks like, because based on Mill Hill not being a 504, and some other stuff going on, and, and everything else we've been talking about, I think we do need to really take a very close investigative look at what we're doing with our facilities. And I do think that Malona McBroom should be involved with this. I do think that we should have them do a feasibility study this summer, and it's not necessarily, you know, in-depth where they're pulling street addresses or anything, but it does allow them to move forward in looking at some of the things that we've talked about. So that's where I'm at with this, I just wanted to throw it out there, and, and see where everybody's at, but I do plan to make that amendment motion unless somebody else has something similar or different that I agree with.
Mr. Peterson?
I've wrestled with this a lot. I, I do believe that we're moving in the correct direction by bifurcating the program. I've been reluctant all along to abandon the Ward facility. I, I understand the goal of the equity between the programs, that's, that's something I've struggled with, because clearly if we have something that is in a facility we built for ECC, and half of it that's in a facility that we modified to kind of do our best with, issues of equity are going to come up. But I, I agree with Mr. Asa in the sense that the loss of those three extra notional classrooms at Mill Hill changes the calculus. And I do believe that we're going to need elementary school space, and so it makes me even more reluctant to give up the Ward facility. The way I thought about this issue was, and, and one of my primary concerns is not to, not to diminish the momentum that we're building toward the redistricting decision, which I think is necessary and, and should be a very high priority for this board. I, I have been thinking about it in terms of, as Mr. Asa said, keeping the Ward facility, but as part of our charge to Malona McBroom, asking which facility between North Stratfield and Holland Hill may be most appropriate, given, given their view of the situation and population trends. I do think that that doesn't quite accomplish a pause, but it does give us a little bit of breathing room to try to build community buy-in, which, as we've seen from our flood of comments from both Holland Hill and North Stratfield parents, I think is actually, is important. So I, when you come up with your, with the form of your amendment, Mr. Asa, I'd just keep that in mind.
Ms. Lieber?
Just to second that, I support maintaining Ward, for all the reasons you both have laid out, and also, with the pace of growth likely to continue for our ECC program, I don't think that if you're thinking 10, 15 years out, we can afford to give up Ward. And it is possible that, and I don't, and I want to be sensitive, because ideally, having one facility would have been a solution we could have achieved. But I also don't want to sound like I think we're breaking up Ward, because I think, ECC Ward, I think we're replicating it, because we're allowing for such expansion, and maintaining the pure ratio, that is ideal. But we're likely going to have to triplicate it, and have a third location that is, in 10, 15 years, if we're thinking long-term, and I think we will really regret giving up ECC Ward in 10 or 15 years, if the growth of our ECC program continues at this rate. So, for that reason, I also would support maintaining ECC Ward, and also want to apologize to Dr. Jones for all kind of the flip-flops on, on this decision, as we've kind of gotten more information. I think I've also evolved my thinking, so I apologize for that frustration.
Mrs. Max Canelli?
And actually, that's a perfect point for me to piggyback on, because, again, just to be clear to the public, that the idea of abandoning Ward very much came from the board, not from staff. We asked for equity. So this, that was not a staff recommendation. We, obviously, the staff, as they always do when we charge them with something, they said, and here's what we can positively do with that Ward space, it would be welcomed, et cetera. But just as, you know, because right now, I think we are serving an invaluable educational piece for the public. You know, the, the comment that came across loud and clear through the emails, over and over again, was, don't rush this, and yet, we've been talking about this for a year. This is not a rushed decision at all. We have been having this conversation, and I'm, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not pointing blame, it's, but this hasn't been rushed. And so, but that's, but that said, there clearly still is an education piece that needs to take place. You know, just as we were talking about with the schedules, you know, that can be a behind-the-scenes conversation all we want, parents had to be involved in it. So clearly, that's something that hasn't, while the people here, watching on TV, knew, but it didn't get disseminated as we thought it would have been, because we have been talking about it for years. So, again, I just, for the public to know, that was not a staff recommendation. That said, it also, I'm in favor of maintaining the Ward site, for the reason, primarily for the reason that I have, has been my hesitation throughout this, which is, especially those itinerant services. I've always been uncomfortable with those being moved into the elementary school, the traffic in and out of the buildings, how does that get handled, and maintaining Ward allows that, for that to happen. I'd had a slightly different thought than what Mr. Asa had submitted, so I don't know what the board thinks. I have not been as big a fan of the, of the Stratfield site, just because it's, where those classrooms are put are still so much in the midst of heavy traffic areas, and something about Holland Hill and North Stratfield, which recommended themselves more based on our tour, which was not a quick tour, we spent a, you know, a full hour questioning staff at these sites, but how they could be isolated in the two places that staff were saying far more so than they were in the Stratfield site. So I had sent an email to Dr. Jones, asking, just giving a heads-up, granted, it was a little bit late yesterday, so, but asking about the idea of maintaining Ward, and then having three classrooms from North Stratfield, three or four, because of that natural break in that one wing, and then perhaps two or three at Holland Hill, as one way, as an acknowledgement of the growing population, the uncertainty of the growth of the population at Holland Hill, the more known size, although I hear, again, about the building comments in the North Stratfield community. So my suggestion had been to have Ward, North Stratfield, and Holland Hill as part of this, with also the idea of perhaps postponing this vote and to the next meeting, with the idea that the public, that there needs to be, and, and I don't want to hold up our redistricting conversation, I do not want to hold up this charge to Malona McBroom, but I think doing some step where the public gets the chance to, you know, some kind of meeting at North Stratfield, perhaps one also at Holland Hill, they've been, I think, tuned in a little bit longer than North Stratfield has on this conversation, but just saying, because I went through all of the emails, I did not get a chance to respond, but I took notes on every single topic raised, and we do actually have answers for the vast majority of them already. But the fact that nine of us know, and staff know, that's an incomplete picture. The parents need that piece as well. And so I don't think this would be that hard... need that piece as well. And so I don't think this would be that hard to pull together. It's an unfortunate, rather busy time of the year, but at some point in the next week, I think we need to have that meeting so that when we have a vote, if the board supported postponing to the next meeting, that that meeting has taken place. Because again, all of these answers that we have, we really do have answers for the vast majority of them that were raised in those emails.
Ms. Jacobson, and then Mr. Asa.
Just a question on what you're saying about moving it to the next meeting. To Dr. Jones, if the board didn't take action on this until the August meeting, we are still a go for next year, right? I mean, the staff has already made plans and arrangements, and so am I assuming right that regardless next year, it's going to be ECC Ward and Stratford?
Stratfield.
Stratfield, sorry. Sorry, it's late. So in essence, my only fear is trying to get that, those meetings and stuff. I think those are very good ideas. I'm just afraid of the logistics of trying to pull that off in two weeks. So I guess my question is, could this be postponed to the August meeting?
And just as my fault, my thinking had been, because obviously, I agree with you, this is not the ideal time of year. On the other hand, if we're going to have the vote on the charge to Malona McBroom, that's, and if we're doing that at our second June meeting, as was our board goal, that's why I thought it would have to be now.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Just to follow up to Mrs. Maxicanelli, Ms. Jacobson, you're next. To your point that this decision we're making right now really could just be viewed as information that we need to give Malona McBroom a charge, to get us, for them to run the scenarios and to come back with us to say, if, to Mr. Peterson's point, if you put it at North Stratfield, this is what it's going to look like. If you put it at Holland Hill, this is what it's going to look like. To Mr. Asa's point, next year, we're set. We're going to be at Ward, we're going to be at Stratfield. I think that Malona McBroom could do some of this work over the summer, give us some scenarios, and then come back, because there were a lot of questions, what is that going to mean if it's at North Stratfield? What is it going to, it's going to mean if it's at Holland Hill? We're not going to have, we'll have some idea, but not as clear a picture, I think, than if Malona McBroom did that work. So I, and I do, there's been a lot of talking points over the last, since we've found out that we don't have those three classrooms at Mill Hill pausing. And a lot of other ideas have come up in the public, just in terms of other sites, expanding at Ward, looking at Oldfield, looking, you know, just revisiting everything, some of the work that's done before. So I want to give Dr. Jones a chance to just express an opinion about facilities and, you know, what delaying might mean.
You know, I think you're really, I mean, you're looking, as you said, next year's already set, so you already know it's ECC Ward and Stratfield. But if the board is not really sure what that model's going to be, why would you, and I think Mr. Mancusi and I have said this, why would you pull kids out of Stratfield, move them somewhere else, have them, you know, re-acclimate to a whole nother building? It's also an acclimation for the existing staff. You have pre-K there, you know, Stratfield has buddy programs in place. We've said all along, we believe what's happening there is they're doing great work, and their parents have been happy. So if you're not going to go to something that is really different, and you're going to push all out into the elementary, then why change what's working? So that would be, you know, our tactic. Now, I do believe, whether that's two years or four years, and I said it six, eight months ago, that to me, short-term is five and 10 years, because I don't think this is an easy problem to solve. And I know a lot of you wanted to solve it in a year or two, and I think that that was very admirable, but it's a big challenge. It's a growing program. So if it gets to '21, '22, and Malona and McBroom are working with you on pre-K through five and looking at that whole piece, you might have a different plan. And if they don't, then you look at like a North Stratfield to add the third program, because that's what it's going to be. But I agree with what you're saying after the Mill Hill vote. I mean, every, all of the work that's been done since before I came in 2016 was predicated on having a 504 at Mill Hill and Holland Hill. And losing those 70 seats on that side of town is going to impact if the projections are correct and we keep growing. And the other thing, I mean, I would just add is, you know, from a facility standpoint, when you look at North Stratfield, it comes back to the restrooms and construction again. You know, when we were looking at facilities, we're trying to give you facilities that are more turnkey. We knew we have to add the air conditioning units. Both of the buildings we've recommended need new playgrounds. You'll see that on the waterfall later tonight. We've built that in, so you'll have those options. But I think what we're doing is working right now, and I think that's what you've heard from staff and from, I think, the ECC staff as well.
Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you to everyone. I share somewhat of the same sentiments. I was prepared this evening to also do a motion, but to do nothing, really, or just to not take action. I said at the last meeting that I felt that even with Mill Hill at a 504, that it needed to stay at Ward. Just looking long-term for growth, factoring in town development that we know is coming, that isn't anywhere in our projections or utilizations, and just for a number of reasons. So I definitely would be favorable to delaying this, but also rethinking the charge as well to Malona McBroom, to allow them to play, you know, with what is available, which there isn't really that much left available at this point. So, and determine, within, of course, the guidelines of what needs to be at these places. So just food for thought on that, but I would definitely be in favor of not taking action on this.
Ms. Lieber.
I just want to share that I don't want to support us going down a road where we have two sections in one facility and three sections in another facility, because I think, I don't want to speak for the board, but I've been committed to respecting the continuum of services that we've heard so consistently from our ECC staff, and I have remained optimistic that if we have five or six sections at any one program that we can offer that very high-quality continuum of services that our staff seems to believe is so essential for student outcomes and growth. But if we're going to start breaking it up into a couple of sections here and a couple of sections there, it feels a little bit like, I don't want to say a bait and switch, but a little misleading to, I think, how we've been communicating, at least how I've been communicating, our vision for the long-term of our ECC as being two identical facilities, and then maybe down the road, three identical facilities if we have that level of enrollment. And I know they can never be fully identical. None of our elementary schools are identical, but maintaining determination to try to achieve that as much as possible. So I just want to express that if there was a motion to keep it at Ward and do two sections at Holland Hill, not to pick on Mrs. Maxicanelli's example, and three at North Stratfield, I would not support that, because I think it's a departure from what we've been trying to honor with this transition. And again, in the very long-term, if we're thinking of five to 10 years, really a short-term, beyond that, we likely could have three ECC locations that each have five or six sections. And I think then that is quite a different discussion than what we're discussing right now. And I do really, I would really enjoy to hear Malona McBroom's analysis of including pre-K enrollment in the charge, but I still think we would need to give them some parameters so that we don't get back from Malona and McBroom what it would look like to have pre-K or ECC in all of our schools. Because we've already had that conversation, and I'm not sure it's well-suited to rehash that conversation. So I do think we should include pre-K and the growth projections that maybe they could find for our pre-K, but also they need some guidance on what our vision is for how we distribute those sections.
Mr. Peterson.
Just, I want to, I just want to second that thought a lot through this whole process. My thinking about splitting the ECC was that there was a point, we've heard from parents that have been involved from years ago, when the program was much smaller, that there was a critical mass. There was a critical mass of students and staff that was able to do fantastic work, and we're doubled that point now. So I don't want to split it up too much where it gets atomized. So I'm very much in favor of the idea of two sites. When you say duplicated, that's exactly the formulation that I would prefer.
Ms. Jacobson.
I just wanted to piggyback or follow up to Mrs. Jen Lieber, and I certainly appreciate that sentiment, but also I've expressed a concern that we have K-5 kids, that these weren't built for preschool. These are elementary K-5 schools that we're putting in a lot of specialized programming in, that we have to deliver, obviously, but also sensitive to our K-5 needs and their schools as well. And again, Malona McBroom, we need to get the math of district-wide, how all of these classrooms being taken out of capacity, plus not getting the three at Mill Hill, is going to affect all of our schools. So hopefully a new 10-year projection, and we're going to need new utilization rates, because our ones now are not accurate anymore. So I'm sensitive to both of those issues and being fair to everybody.
Mrs. Graber. Mr. Dwyer, follow Ms. Pico.
There is a big echo with some of these. I appreciate that Mrs. Maxicanelli brought forward that this board gave very clear direction, well, eight to one direction, about being located in two different elementary schools to create more or less 75, 80 students in one and 75 or 80 students in another, which mirrored the original intent of an 80-child program with the appropriate staff to it. But it's clear that the board has changed its viewpoint. I'm not in favor of postponing this decision. I would rather have Mr. Asa's amendment say, it's clear, stay at Ward and stay at Stratfield, and I'd rather have it say, Ward and the appropriate elementary school. I never liked tying the hands of staff as to which space is best for students. And if we start getting into, well, we'll decide whether it's Stratfield and North Stratfield or North Stratfield and Holland Hill, I think that's up to the staff to bring forward to us. Right now, it is Ward and it's Stratfield. And if things change, the staff would come forward to us and say, we've decided for good and just reasons that we ought to look at a different elementary school. And so I would rather say, we're going to make a clear decision tonight. It's Ward and Stratfield until a change is recommended, because that gives clarity to the staff, it gives clarity to the parents. The only concern I have in measuring this, are we successful, is I have focused on the 50/50 peer issue as being very important. And if next year, we find that the programs are not equal, because the Ward site is not 50/50, they can't get it there, no matter how hard they try, they just can't get it there, and therefore, there's a distinctive difference between the two sites on that issue, then I would be concerned about that decision to stay at Ward. There is a ripple effect, a domino effect, that when the Board of Finance says, no, you don't need the space, and we know we do, then we have the ripple effect to ECC, we have the ripple effect to the Walter Fitzgerald campus, we have the ripple effect to redistricting, we have a ripple effect to what happens with racial imbalance. All of these things back up. And so I think we ought to be clear with Malona and McBroom. Ward in one elementary school and figure out how to solve the other problems that we're dealing with relative to facility utilization based on that clarity. Thank you.
Ms. Pico.
I don't want to seem like a broken record. I'm still in favor of one site. I never thought we should leave Ward. I said that at the last meeting. I gave a very good, what I thought was a presentation about how we had invested in that site and it's perfect for those students. I'm more concerned that any other second site be equally, and so if we have to invest in that second site to make it accommodating. I really am grateful to the extensive tour they gave us of the two schools and answered thousands of our questions about every little thing and closets we went into and rooms, and that was wonderful. My amendment would be simply to give a charge to Malona McBroom to look at either a one-site option or a two-site option, with Ward being one of them and one of the other schools in our district. Until Malona and McBroom come back and give us scenarios, I don't think we can make this decision, and we don't have to do it right now.
Mrs. Maxicanelli.
We can't have Ward as the single site. We can't. We're not building a second floor on that, and Ward has not given up any of its other space around there. It can't afford to lose the parking, and it's just got a little courtyard with that playground that we invested in. So I had joined you all along as being in favor of a single site, but that was going, and we're not going, Oldfield is prohibitively expensive. That's not happening. I don't want to revisit a conversation we've already had, because others suddenly think it's a good idea, then they can look into it. We already have. But the single site will have to be another elementary school. So just to the public that is advocating for that, keep in mind, you're now talking about somebody else's school being completely taken from them. And I was still, had been in favor of having that examination, because I believed in what the staff said, because, again, absolutely see the benefits of a better transition when we put it in an elementary school. But Ward cannot be the single site. I mean, I have no interest in Malona and McBroom testing scenarios with that, because it can't be at Ward.
I just think it's something that maybe the public needs to see. That's all I'm saying.
A single site at...
Either at another elementary school or anything. It just, it's out there. And so if you want people to buy into this, you have to show them all the scenarios.
Just want a clarification of what, a single site in an elementary school, and whether or not it's possible now that we have three less classrooms to play with at Mill Hill. Okay. Can I just make one, just one to some of the comments that are made? I think that for the charge of Malona McBroom, I still think that we need to give them some guidance of the schools that we would consider for the ECC, based on the rubric that staff used, for air conditioning, for parking, for the bathrooms. That's important. So I don't think that we can just say, you know, tell us where you think we should put it. Tell us where you think we should put it based on this list.
Yeah, criteria.
Right, by that criteria. Just wanted to clarify that. Ms. Jacobson.
I just wanted to follow up with what Ms. Pico said. Did you mean Ward as one site doing an addition, or what did you mean by that?
I mean either/or, because it's out there, right? People are talking about it. So if what we need to see is the scenario of repurposing a school, then people have to see what kind of disruption that would be in our facilities. Or if it's adding on to Ward, how much is that going to cost us to now add on, and is it possible? But the idea is ultimately to get people to buy into whatever plan we have. They have to see these scenarios. These are huge decisions.
Thank you. Just wanted to follow up.
Can you just, any guidance or thoughts on adding on to Ward, some of the, just for the public's, just for the classrooms that are abutting the ECC?
We looked at that, yes, you remember, early on. You've got the automotive, you have the black box. Ultimately, it is a high school site, so taking away or trying to move that automotive would be millions of dollars. I mean, that's a very difficult solution. You cannot go up with three and four-year-olds. If you just even think about, if you have stairs and you have a fire, you have three and four-year-olds trying to vacate, I don't even think the Fire Marshal, I don't think it would pass code. I don't think they would allow us to do that. I've never seen a state that would. You don't have the space to replicate the entire building. That's what you're doing, is you've gone out to the parking lot, because if you just add two classrooms, that still doesn't solve the problem. That's part of the challenge, is it's grown so much. We have six classrooms there now. We have four more at Stratfield next year. If you're looking at, you know, a long-term plan, I can't imagine you would build less than 12 or 13 rooms, or you'd be right back in the same situation. Now, you know, I've gone through universal pre-K when I was in Oklahoma. We added wings on to all of our elementary schools, but it's expensive to do it. So, you know, if you find a school, can you add, are there any elementaries where you could add 12 or 14 classrooms, perhaps? It'll be pretty much, you know, the expense of an elementary, and that would be a decision you have to make.
Ms. Pico.
Dr. Jones, are the pre-K at Stratford using lots of stairs to go to their playground, to go to the specials?
They have some stairs to go, like, outside, but do they need stairs for egress of that building? building? No. I mean, they can actually go right through the front. Their stairs are not like a second-story stair. When you talk about, it's literally second story. Having all of your pre-K, because you're talking about six or seven classrooms on the second floor and trying to vacate that for fire, I don't think you could get it passed. I'd be shocked.
Mr. Dwyer.
So that there's clarity of what we're debating and voting on, I wonder if Mr. Asa has heard enough conversation that he could put his motion forward, amendment?
I was just about to say that. I also just want to make one more point, that I mentioned a long-range facilities plan, and I think that's something that we're going to have to work on this next year. And I believe some of what some of the board members have said would be a part of that process, a part of a process of creating a new 10-year facilities plan, because the one we have now was created 10 years ago or so.
Updated in 2015.
But when was it originally created?
2011.
2011. So updated, but a plan 2015, we're almost five years out. So I think, knowing the changes that we've had, I think that some of these things could be looked at. And are some of those things maybe adding classrooms to an elementary school that we never talked about? That may be true, okay? So that's going to be a process that we're going to have to go through. So again, going back to the purpose of my motion to amend is keeping, you know, one more thing, let me just say, because I think the Board of Finance and all of the talk about what they did and how they acted and how they talked, one thing to me that they did was they opened the door to the idea that we, maybe we do need to relook and have a fresh look at it, and maybe there will be support, you know, from town bodies to spend in buildings where there may not have been before. I don't know, but I think it lends us to be able to explore that. Going back to my motion, I would say that hearing everything and what Mr. Dwyer said to Dr. Jones really quick, what are your thoughts from the administration's standpoint of maintaining the six classrooms, maintaining Stratfield, and an elementary school, another elementary school if needed, if enrollment increases, or to reduce or phase out classrooms at Stratfield versus naming a specific school like North Stratfield? To Dr. Jones.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's fine. Mr. Mancusi is nodding his head, because we've studied the buildings, I think, to exhaustion. So if in the next two years, something really changed, for instance, at North Stratfield, or I think he would know, you know, and have good judgment about where to put that program.
Okay.
Can I comment on that comment?
If it's a follow-up, yeah.
Only that, to give staff direction to maintain six classrooms, whatever that they find that five is better, the board's on record to require six, so I would only hesitate with that kind of language. Maintain Ward in one other elementary school is, would be more to my liking.
Dr. Jones, can you speak to that?
I think that would be fine. I mean, however many classrooms you have, you either fill them up or you don't, so.
Okay.
Ms. Jacobson.
So I'm just confused why we need to do that. Isn't that what we have?
Well, I think it's twofold. One, it goes to fulfilling our board goal. And two, it also gives us the ability to go to Malone and McBroom and say, "Okay, for at least the next two years, this is what we're doing." And then moving forward with their scenarios, using the rubric or whatever it is, as someone said here, to take that into consideration when they're doing their scenarios.
I have a follow-up on that. And we?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm a little confused on the motion.
For this motion, being that we are talking about approval of EC site for 2020, and your amendment is to, for 2020, to have it be at Ward and Stratfield?
Correct.
And that is it?
Well, no.
No, no, just wait. For 2020?
Okay.
Those are the two locations for the ECC. So we are not suggesting?
Holland Hill or North.
Holland Hill or North Stratfield for 2020.
Correct.
So to Mr. Dwyer's point, that maybe for this motion, that should be it. And then, when we go back, when we go to the charge for Malone and McBroom, then some of this language that we're hearing in terms of looking at another classroom could play into that vote and that decision.
Meanwhile, we're doing the facilities plan, we're having other conversations.
So, Mrs. Maxon Cunnily?
Okay.
And just 10 minutes?
Yeah, what I would like to suggest is that we postpone this vote to the next meeting so that Mr. Asa has time to write out and craft this amendment for all of, and I know you were waiting to float it past the board to see if there's buy-in, so that's fine, but the point is?
I'm ready to move forward.
We're also talking about an entire now other school community that hasn't been notified that they're going to be maintaining it, and that's the Stratfield community. Now, I don't think they'll have a problem with this, but I still believe that when we're going to be making a decision like this, that everyone should be notified. So the postponing is so that it's a clearly crafted amendment. I'm not looking to, you know, poo-poo it, I'm not looking to denigrate it, but so that we know exactly what we're talking about, I would like to postpone this vote to the next meeting so that this can be crafted, written out, and disseminated to the public as part of our enclosures.
Are you putting that forward as a motion?
I was actually looking at Mr. Asa's face to see if it in any way really ran counter to what he wanted to do, but the point is, we don't have a motion in front of us.
Well?
And I'd like to see it in writing.
So to the point of, you say Stratfield doesn't know?
That it would be considered as a site now for years into the future.
We said a while back that, Dr. Jones said that that was a five, short term was five to 10 years. So they do know.
Not according to this, which is our voting item.
Okay.
I'm not looking to vote against what you're suggesting now. Obviously, my suggestion is not.
I'm okay holding until the next meeting to propose a formal amendment.
Okay. So how about I put a motion forward to say, "We postpone this until the next regular meeting." That's a motion.
Second, Ms. Leeper. To the public on that motion?
Procedural, do we? We don't go to the public on procedural motion.
Thanks. Any discussion?
So what are we supposed to discover between now and two weeks?
It really just notices Stratfield that they will be at that.
And lets the public see it fully, exactly what we're talking about, so that this should be written out with dates, with buildings named, so that it, or with blanks, with saying, "And this blank is what we have to fill in at the next meeting." I just think it needs to be written out so everyone knows.
I, in honesty, before the next meeting, I'm not sure if I'll be here at the next meeting, but I don't think in the next, when's our next meeting, like, two weeks? That we're going to have some revelation from people in the community about Stratfield when, next year will be the third year that it's, that it will be in that building. And I think if you start going to the community on programs that are already existing, they're already there, and we want to go start vetting that, I think it's a dangerous path a little bit.
Okay, I guess what I would say is, we've already made the motion. I definitely hear Dr. Jones's point. I'm still saying, I'd like to see it written out. Right now, we're voting on a whole color-coded timeline. I would like to see it written out. That's just for absolute clarity. I hear Dr. Jones's point. I don't see a revolution happening, but it's still, I want the public to know exactly what we mean by this, and no one's saying later, "Well, maybe..." I thought we were just talking about Stratfield for five years, and in fact, we're still thinking, "No, in two, we might not." I just want it written out.
Before we do that, can I just have a motion to extend the meeting to 11:15? Mr. Asa, second by, Ms. Jacobson, all in favor? Mrs. Peterson, Mrs. Maxon Cunnily, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Leeper, all opposed? Mr. Dwyer and Ms. Pitts. Motion passes. Okay, back to?
The motion.
Back to the motion. All in favor of postponing until the next meeting? Ms. Pitts, Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxon Cunnily, Mr. Peterson, all opposed? Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, motion passes. Discussion of the draft waterfall schedule?
Homework.
Homework. She clearly was late.
We know all that switching around.
Six A.
Six A, first reading of policy, 6154, instruction homework.
Okay, my original intention had been simply to ask the board, as usual, please get your questions to us in advance, please get any issues you have to us in advance, because we are having our June 18 meeting, policy meeting, and I have already, you know, the policy committee is already aware, Mr. Cummings is already aware, that this is our first agenda item solely for the purpose of reacting to board feedback. So the board has had, and Mrs. Vitale, you'll get an earful when you watch Fair TV, which is why we were laughing, because we got a lot of comments from the public, which I have a lot written down and which I now won't do, and I also have still my typed notes when we engaged in conversation with our headmasters. So I'll just hit a couple of highlights as opposed to my usual, "Get me your questions in advance." First of all, to the point that any staff were taken aback by this, you know, unfortunately, I have to tell them to reference that comment to their administration, because we've been talking about homework policy for months. We've said for months prior to that, we were going to be talking about it. So any staff who are taken aback are going to need to take that up with their building leadership. Clearly, one thing that came out of the comments today was how vitally important professional development will be, the introduction of this policy. Certain things were taken very literally, that in the hours of conversation that policy has had about this, honestly, will need to be explained. And to that point, I would also say, I strongly encourage any staff who is still paying attention to please get their comments to the policy committee so that we can respond individually. There's a lot, I could have had some give and take on tonight, but that's not how public comment works, but that whether we can address this or whether they're going to have to go to their building leadership, I don't know. I still think that while we clearly, as a committee, had a great deal of issue with what happened this past year with formative, I still view it absolutely as a positive in that it incurred, it forced a very good building dialogue and district dialogue regarding formative assessments, the role of homework, et cetera. And clearly, it's made some teachers reflect on their practices. And I should have started by saying, as all those comments are coming out, that a reminder, which I think the staff knows, is that I am a teacher. I have been in education for quite some time, and that the things we talked about were very much formed by my own experience, not just by rumors from parents or rumors from teenagers, that that very much formed some of our conversations. And it didn't mean I got everything I wanted, but we had a very robust, education-focused policy committee time. And to the point that if we're having a problem with how homework is being done, that we, the policy committee, should be telling administrators, "This is how we tell administrators that there's an issue. We have no business going to a headmaster saying, 'You need to fix this.'" That's central office staff, that's our superintendent. How we give direction to administrators is through policy. This is the correct process to follow. This is not treating them as children. In fact, almost all of the wording in this policy was taken from other districts. We did not craft the vast majority of this ourselves. This is, there's plenty of precedent for most of what was in here. That doesn't mean it's not jarring if you've never had it before, having been a teacher in a district where things got rolled out to us and similar level of outrage, and so I understand that. But this is hardly groundbreaking path that we are on. And I'd also want to share with the board that our headmasters did do a survey with their staff, which we very much appreciated because it was unadulterated getting back to us, we got their uncensored feedback, and a tremendous number of staff members were in favor of this idea of the policy and the 10%. You know, it's the old rule, if you're happy with something, you don't go to the meeting to talk about it. And that does not mean I don't respect the point of view that was represented here, because I certainly do. But please know that there is another point of view. And, you know, ultimately, we may talk about 21st century skills, that doesn't mean kids have changed that much yet. You know, they haven't become new creatures, new beings with prefrontal lobes that develop at, you know, at the age of nine. Hasn't happened yet. They're still kids, the development is still happening, and that was very much the basis for what, a lot of what was done here. Should they be responsible? Sure. You know, okay, I have a lot of "shoulds" with my kids, you know, starting with, "They should be cleaning their room." Yeah, well, it's not happening, and they still trip. But, so I'll leave it there, I do have a lot more comments written down, but being sensitive to the time and that there still might be public comment, I just reiterate to my fellow board members to please read this over carefully. Get us your feedback, especially if anyone is thinking of amendments, because we, as the policy committee, will be talking about this on June 18. And if someone's saying, "I really want to see this changed," or "I have grave reservations here," we will have that conversation. The last thing I will leave you with is there was not one comment raised here today that hasn't already been hashed out in policy. None of it surprised me. We have reasons behind all of it, but that's what I'm not going to get into right now.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Leeper, follow Mr. Dwyer.
I usually try to be better about getting policy, my comments in advance, and when you told me you were doing homework, all I did was give elementary school ideas, so, but I will just throw out that I have grave reservations with this, and I'll get you more specific feedback.
Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer.
This won't be a surprise to Mrs. Maxon Cunnily when I say that over the last seven years, I've watched this board get more prescriptive with policies, telling staff exactly how to do stuff. I have never liked going down that path. We are a policy board and rely on our professional, credentialed, experienced staff to implement that policy as it makes sense in each individual classroom, because our children are different and teachers have to react to those differences. So I'm not in favor of a policy that feels like it's very prescriptive. Number two is, I have the impression that this policy did not get changed because of any state law change. Is that a correct impression?
That is correct.
And did this policy get changed because the administration came forward and said, "We need a new policy"?
It's the result of a tremendous amount of parent feedback and the observations of three policy committee members.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion of draft waterfall schedule, Mr. Papa George.
While he's coming forward, I'm just going to point out some things because in the essence of time. I know one of the question a couple of you asked was about Sherman and why Sherman on here now shows at 3 million. That is because the Sherman roof was originally in your August schedule at 2022, 2023 for a roof replacement. That, since the Phase Four is now needed, that's been put in as part of the Phase Four. And so to get to that 3 million, it's 1.3 million for the roof, just over 1 million for the stage mechanical and HVAC controls that have been cut out, plus 500,000 contingency, which leaves about 115,000 escalation. So that's where that number comes from. I just figured that was one of the questions. The other thing I'll just point out, because I did send in an email to you, is Mr. Papa George did update the chart so that on the far left, you have numbers, so you can refer to it by the item number, if you have a question. And if you see gray on the far left, that is where there was a project that moved, there was some change, and that's on the waterfall schedule, so that you can see the gray components with the red print. Mr. Papa George.
I'm sorry we don't leave you a lot of time. So just really, some of the highlights, I think, and we'll be reviewing this document again periodically.
Dr. Jones already mentioned the numbers added to the side, the gray highlights with the red writing, so that you can pick out anything that's changed. We've also kind of made the boxes a little more clear, so that the top shows you the projects and then the breakout below, kind of lays it out a little better. So really, because of time, if there's any questions on it.
Ms. Jacobson.
Just a quick notice, I had a question on the $200,000, line item number 27, sorry. Because at our adjustment meeting, we took out 104,500 of that money, it was cut in our adjustments. So I was wondering why the full 200,000? our adjustments, so I was wondering why the full $200,000 was still here?
That's the same question. We talked about, about the operating versus on line 27.
Line 27.
There was only, so there should have only been 95.5 left.
It's actually, that's the operating budget. This was, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
Oh, there's another 200?
The $200,000 that you're talking about, about Walter Fitzgerald, that was the operating budget for this year, for projects to keep the school up and running, and minor repairs needed, plus the air conditioning for the Zen room at Walter Fitzgerald. This line item is moving forwards for next year?
It's, this was on the waterfall before? $200,000? It was in the waterfall and the operating budget?
It was in the operating budget to keep the, to do the minor repairs needed at Walter Fitzgerald this year.
Yeah.
It's on the waterfall chart, because of possibility of relocation, or continuing to improve the building, so it's going to continue forwards.
I think I'm hearing your question. It was originally on the waterfall, because we didn't have the lease, and Mr. Cohen had put it in. I don't, I think he did it in, I think it was on your August one. It's on this one, when you look at 1920, it's now been taken out, that's why it's green, because we have the one-year lease.
Two 200s.
Yes, there was, because we thought we could be moving the entire facility, if you go back to the discussion at the beginning of the year. Then if you look at 2021, that's where it'll show up again. You'll see Walter Fitzgerald project on line 31, and again, that's just a placeholder. If you look at, you'll see if you go across, that 250?
Oh, yeah.
And that's because, again, you're in another year, where we've got to figure out.
Inflation.
What's going to happen at the end of the year.
Right, and the notes over here says incorporated into the new Fairfield Board High School, Walter Fitzgerald project, which doesn't sound like it's going to probably happen. But, all right, we won't get into that. But my concern is, I have one thing that I am a little concerned about on this. So the Fairfield Low High School bathrooms, we had an issue there this year, correct? And this item, I believe, has been on the waterfall since 2013. And we're pumped, it's been, you know, bounced around, and bounced around, and bounced around. And, you know, we heard a lot of feedback during the budget season, and especially when we got cut, what not to cut, not to defer maintenance anymore, or to put off maintenance. I know now, all of a sudden, we're getting a whole bunch of new buildings built for us, but really, the issue at that time was maintenance issues. So, I, what is the status of those buildings? It's been 10 years since they've been needed to be done. And the price is also the same exact as it was in 2013. Is that possible, that it could be the same price in 10 years later?
We will, we will have to do some research into that, and find out why it is the same price. It should not be, as, obviously, because of escalation with construction, I think. We did move it back, as you noted, because of the Osborne Hill roof issues we're having right now.
Yeah.
We need to keep the, we feel that the roof comes before the bathrooms. We did have some issues at the bathrooms, as you're aware of. Unfortunately, student kind of played a role in that, so we're going to hopefully work with that and try to control that as much as possible.
I mean, is there any way to just keep that where it is?
We can look into it.
Just for the essence of time, and there's going to be no action taken on this waterfall over, over the summer.
Just two comments?
I just want them to have some feedback. Can I ask you to, a little forewarning of being put on the agenda for one of our first meetings at the beginning of the next school year, to kind of go into this in a little more depth?
Okay, that's all, those are the only things I have.
And if board members have more questions, just to email them.
Just two comments.
Yep.
Normally, we would review this in August, just prior to being submitted to the town. Can I assume that this will be on our August agenda, so that we know exactly what is being given to the town?
Yes.
And then, number two, we've talked about AC, air conditioning, for a while. I would think it would be good for us to at least open up a line and get something in there, so that it's very clear to the Board of Finance that we're pursuing that.
Good suggestion. Okay. Approval of minutes, recommended motion, the Board of Education approved the May 7, 2019 special meeting minutes, and the May 21, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Got a motion, Mrs. Gerber, second by Ms. Pitko, all in favor. Motion passes 9-0. Superintendent's report?
Just a reminder, graduation is Friday at 5 o'clock. That, that time change, just making sure people remember that. Just, I do want to just quickly mention, Mr. Papa George is continuing to work with W F C. We have had better response from the DIAS in the last couple of weeks, and so we should be able to update you hopefully at the, between now and the next meeting.
Committee liaison reports? Seeing none, open board comment. Mr. Asa?
Just like to take a minute really quick. Dr. Jones kind of sneaked in there that this may be her last meeting. So, just wanted to take an opportunity to thank her for her time and energy and effort with the Fairfield Public School Systems and this board. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I second that, especially over these last, you know, the last couple of months, last couple of days, last couple of weeks. Thank you, and we wish you all the best, and thank you so much for all the positive contributions you made while you were here. Any other open board comments? All right, five minutes, going to the public, get any public comment, come on up, Mrs. Rotelli.
Hi, guys. Bonnie Rotelli, 1280 Merritt Street. I don't know that I'm going to be here at your next meeting, so I just wanted to stay and give some feedback on the E C C, of course. I, I just want to say something and put it out there, because it frustrates me every time I hear it, when we talk about the E C C. It's not, like, I'll hear it in comments, in other town bodies. The E C C staff, you know, I know they want to stay together. It's a collaborative program, that's why. They're not saying, I want to stay together because I want to work with my best friend. They're saying they want to stay together because it's the most beneficial thing for the students. So I want everybody to remember that. I also want everybody to remember that it's a collaborative model with extremely high outcomes. It's very successful. So the minute we dismantle that, it's not the same program. It's not going to be equal, no matter where you put it. So I fully support maintaining the Ward site. I don't, I was never comfortable with moving it out of Ward, and I realized Stratfield is just what we have to do in the meantime, because we're bursting at the seams at Ward. So I don't want this to be rushed at all. I don't want to push Holland Hill or North Stratfield or whatever. I think that we should explore all of our options with Malona McBroom, whether that means repurposing an elementary school, or looking into sites that have now come online, like, oh, you know, social media options that are out there. I believe that the Board of Finance did kind of open a door by the decision that they made, so I want to explore every single option. I want to explore building on to Ward, I want to explore Oldfield, I want to explore everything, because you see how passionate we are as a community to keep this program intact. And if there is even the slightest bit of chance that we can maintain one site in the future, I want to make sure that we have literally exhausted all possibilities to do just that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, motion to a drone. Mr. Asa, all in favor? Oh, second, Ms. Pitko, sorry. All in favor? Motion passes.